Morning all, Mr. President. The time is now nine oh one AM and you can call the meeting to order.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, colleagues, staff, members of the public. It's nine AM on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and we're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start having, let's start with having the Clerk of the Board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, and then select the Spanish language, and then finally click Done. At this time, I would like my colleague, Dolan or Paulina, to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Estimados miembros del público, se brindará interpretación en español en vivo durante toda esta reunión. Para acceder a las funciones de prescripción en Zoom, si se conecta a través de una computadora, busque el globo terráqueo que se encuentra en la parte inferior de la pantalla y elige el idioma español. Si se conecta a través de una tableta o un teléfono, ubique el menú de los tres puntos, seleccione Interpretación, luego el idioma español, y finalmente presione Finalizar. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please? Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Present.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet?
Here.
Thank you, and President Canepa.
I am here.
Thank you, all present. Great, that brings us to honoring the life of. Do we have any members who have honoring the life of? Supervisor Mueller?
I actually have an honoring the life of in a board member remark.
Okay.
I'll start with the board member remark.
Yes.
Colleagues, I've been purposely quiet since Measure A passed to avoid accusations of bias. But this morning, I feel compelled to speak. I'd like to say to the many stakeholders and every witness on both sides of this matter waiting for the process to begin with respect to the sheriff, we appreciate your patience and we value your voices, and we are frustrated by the delay. Supervisor Canepa, a few weeks back, you stated as president of this board, you didn't care how long this process took. Respectfully, I disagree. This process can be both time-efficient and fair. Fair to the sheriff, but also fair to the employees in the sheriff's office and the residents of this county. It's time for this board to move forward with this process and whatever ultimately action the board may or may not take. With that, I'd like to go ahead and move to honoring the life. Today, I'd like to take a moment to honor the life and legacy of Dylan Taylor, a beloved coach, educator, and community leader whose presence made a lasting difference in the lives of so many students in Menlo Park and Atherton. Dylan tragically lost his life in a bicycle accident on May seventh, twenty twenty-five. To many, he was more than just an educator and coach. He was someone who truly showed up for his students. As a freshman football coach at Menlo Atherton High School and a paraeducator in the Menlo Park City and Los Lomitas Elementary School Districts, Dylan was devoted to nurturing and helping the students grow into their potential. Dylan's commitment to his community was evident in every role he undertook, whether coaching, teaching, or simply offering a listening ear. He made a lasting impression on those around him. His legacy of compassion and service will be, will live on in the lives he's touched. He was so loved by his family. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and pass to Supervisor Gochet.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. To, I also want to acknowledge the family and just acknowledge the pain that has happened. Tragically, someone was riding their bike, and we have proven that the environment or the infrastructure or just drivers paying attention was not good enough. Headed to work to take care of children, and he didn't do it, all because of an accident. So I'm standing not only with Dylan's family, but also to those who have to bike to work every day with uncertainty. We will continue to look at infrastructure and how we can protect those who decide to get to work that way. And at this moment, I would just request that you join me in a moment of silence for Dylan. Thank you so much.
Are there any other honoring the life of or board member comments? Seeing none, before I honor the life of, I really want to address Supervisor Mueller's comments. And I think, you know, I think from the beginning, Supervisor Mueller, all of us are committed to making sure that we come working together collaboratively on a due process. And I want to make sure as we move forward, it's not just the president of this board, it's us collectively and collaboratively working together. I know we're acutely focused on, on due process and we'll remain there. So I appreciate your comments. So with that, we'll move forward to honoring the life of. I would first like to honor the life of Rochelle Anne Delorio, a beloved wife, mother, grandmother, aunt, and friend who passed away on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at the age of seventy-two. A native San Franciscan, Shelley was born on May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-two, and lived a life marked by love, compassion, and quiet strength. Cherished by all who knew her, Shelley is survived by her devoted husband Joe and their three loving children, Eric, Danielle, Mike, and Tony. Shelley was a proud and doting grandmother to Juliana, Gianni, and Nico. Shelley was born and raised in the Crocker Amazon neighborhood of San Francisco and was a spirited graduate of Balboa High School, class of nineteen seventy. In nineteen seventy-two, while serving as maid of honor at her best friend's wedding, she met Joe, best man for his brother. That joyful occasion blossomed to a lifelong love, and Shelley and Joe were married on June nineteen seventy-four. They shared fifty-one wonderful years together, building a home filled with love and raising a close-knit family. After the births of their children, Shelley sought a career that would allow her to be present during school breaks. She found a role in food service with the South San Francisco Unified School District, a position she held with dedication for over twenty-five years. Over a decade ago, Shelley and Joe retired and moved to Lincoln, California. There, they enjoyed a peaceful life in their home with a pool, creating new memories with visits from their children and grandchildren, moments Shelley treasured deeply. To all those who had the pleasure of knowing her, Shelley will be remembered as a kind, loving soul who always put others before herself. Her warmth and spirit will live on in the hearts of those she has touched. Secondly, I would like to honor the life of Alfredo Francisco Buena Ventura, who is, who died December twenty-third. Alfredo was surrounded by his family after a long battle with dementia and heart failure. He was a devoted grandfather to Max and father to Ray, the former mayor of Daly City. Alfredo lived a life grounded in hard work, family, and quiet generosity. He was a man of deep character, humble, steady, and always put others first. Alfredo's final wish is that he be buried in the Philippines to be beside his mother and father's gravesite. His son Ray vowed to fulfill his father's dying wish. May he rest in peace. So are there any other comments from board members? Seeing none. Thank you all. We'll move to the public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but are not on the agenda for today's meeting. For matters that are listed on the consent agenda and for matters that are set for closed session, public comment will be limited today to one minute, one minute. Thank you. I'll ask the Clerk to start with public comments from here in the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four speakers from chambers, and then we'll take comments from Zoom. I'll start with Willa Brock, followed by Karen Newport.
Good morning. My name is Willa Brock. I'm Filoli's Associate Director of Interpretation, and I'm here today to tell you a little bit about the Trolls exhibit that's coming to Filoli. So giants are coming to San Mateo County, and they plan to make their home at our beautiful estate. Big adventures await. Beginning June second, Filoli will welcome six larger-than-life trolls from the internationally acclaimed art installation called Save the Humans by Thomas Danbo. The towering sculptures will be hidden along a beautiful two-mile trail through Filoli's redwoods. And the trolls have a message. Humans are forgetting how to care for nature. Their mission is to help us reconnect, reflect, and protect our planet. This is a big adventure for all ages, filled with storytelling, creativity, and hands-on fun. Families can come and pick up free activity backpacks, join transforming trash art projects, and meet trolls who see treasure in nature and wonder in every walk. Each troll has a bis, oh, sorry. Each troll has a big personality, and I'm going to introduce them with a little help from our CEO and President Karen Newport. Ronya Red Eye, the speaker troll, is small but mighty. Sophus Lotus, the listening troll, hears every rustle of nature. Ibi Pip is the birdhouse troll. Bosse Bowler is the painting troll. Kama Can is the treasure troll. And Rosa Sunfinger is the botanical troll. Please come meet them all, and we have some postcards if you want to find out which personality, troll personality you connect with. Thank you.
Supervisor Spear?
I don't want to be trolling, but I'm curious if we have a special family rate that we'll be offering during this time.
I have more about that. Hi, I'm Karen Newport, CEO of Filoli, and why does this matter to San Mateo County? This matters because it is a major cultural attraction for the region, both for residents and non-residents. We are expecting two hundred thousand people during this time, and a hundred thousand of them will be from San Mateo County. And that's important for tourism and economic impact. All of the places that have hosted the trolls, they've been all over the country, have experienced both economic growth and lasting economic impact. It promotes sustainability and environmental awareness. It expands access to nature, and to your point, Supervisor Spear, we offer free admission to people who are participating in the library program as well as anyone who has an EBT card. So that's part of the Museums for All program. And we have education classes that are free for preschool and high school. So lots of opportunities to participate. We hope you'll join us in being trolls ambassadors, and come see us after June seventh.
Thank you so much. You're doing a great job at Filoli. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Farah Yasmin Sheikh, followed by Juliette Threed.
Good morning. So yes, my name is Farah Yasmin Sheikh. I am an artist here in San Mateo County with a nonprofit organization, No Rani Dance. I also happen to be the Arts Commissioner for District Four. Today, I'm speaking more as a living artist here in this area. On May second, many of us received devastating news from NEA about grants being cut even though they had been previously committed, publicly acknowledged, and so forth. And so for the way NEA works, this is reimbursement-based. Many of us had projects already in motion, can no longer even get the reimbursement for those expenses we've made. We, many of us from our county across the state, went up to the Capitol in April for Arts Creativity and Culture Month. We met with various state-elected officials advocating for actually five million to be actually reinstituted into the budget as we saw yesterday. That's not the case. So I just come to you today to acknowledge the importance of art and artists nationally, globally, definitely here in our county. We can only make a living if we can be supported in various ways. And I know AB four-five-six is up for, is on the agenda, and I really look to the supervisors for your support of this initiative as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker from chambers is Juliette Threed.
Yeah, good morning, San Mateo Board of Supervisors, Julie Threed. I drove down from Bute County, sent you a nine-page email last night, and I'm hearing a much more somber topic, unfortunately. And you talked about some members of your community that passed away, so I'll honor my mom. Jane Williamson passed away from four shots of the Moderna COVID vaccine, and it's a travesty that we keep administering this toxic product in our state. I again drove down from Bute County. I worked there at the Public Health Department, working for these mass vaccination clinics. I suffer from microangiopathy. I've had three detached retinas. I've got a chronic case of tinnitus, and I've got a heart problem that's restricting my life. Again, I'm traveling from county to county. My daughter works at Alameda County as a medical assistant, so this is my life's work. You're county number twenty-three. And so I've given you a lot of information. Please look at these resources, do your research. Reactnineteen.org is a lobbyist in Washington DC that's got a lot of the science and legal information. Formerfedsfreedom.org, americansforhealthfreedom.org. Please do your research. Please stop administration of these COVID vaccines in your county. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, one additional comment from Adolo Wallace? Apollo Wallace, speaking on Consent Item Number Nineteen.
Good morning, President Canepa and the board. I'm Apollo Wallace, Teamsters Local Two Seven Eight Five. I am here to speak in favor of Item Nineteen. I have, we represent Flying Food Group. They are airport caterers. They drive the trucks to the planes to deliver the food. It is forty-three drivers, all immigrant workforce. We've been on strike for fifty-nine days. The company is not bargaining in good faith with us. We are coming, asking for help and support of this measure. For fifty-nine days, we have been fighting a fight. President Canepa was there, day one, watching trucks blow through our lines. Since then, three of us have been hit by trucks, me including. We've been threatened with violence. It has been a very tumultuous time, and we are just looking to end this strike, get our workers back to, to what they do best, driving the trucks, and I think that is about it. Thank you, President Canepa, for bringing this. I look for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, over to you for verbal comments via Zoom.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, the consent agenda today begins at Item Nineteen through and including closed session at Item Sixty-four. Five hands raised. We have Mark Fox, followed by Matt Franchel. Mark, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, President Canepa. My fellow elected county supervisor, Mr. Mueller, Supervisor Spear, Corzo Mueller, Andrew Batier, and county executive, Mr. Patterson. Thank I love you for your service to the town. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness in their families by supporting a vigorous certification of the government's care court program with board's immediate implementation of Senate Bill Forty-three. Make the agreement passing of the deal line or the top county legislative priority and funding of the Disability Rights California Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, who defend the moral limits of each district or act of the top county federal legislative priority. San Mateo County's health chief, Pauline Matella, is quoted as admitting, quote, "SD Forty-three changes in the seventy-two-hour involuntary commitment to include both mental illness and substance abuse was changed." However, the implementation remained January first, twenty twenty-six, in our last Congress edition of the On the Back. We need to do something yesterday, not just now. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Franchel, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Matt Franchel, counsel for Sheriff Corbus, and I want to bring two issues up today. One, I would like to raise that the minute from the May sixth board meeting, be revised to accurately reflect the amendment that was voted upon for the removal procedures. It appears that the published procedures do not accurately reflect the discussion and the amendment that occurred on the May sixth meeting. And then, secondly, I'd like to raise, just to comment about this whole process and whether it's been, you know, slow or efficient. I would just note for everyone that legislation should not be rushed. If there is a particular individual or instance, that is something that is targeted that should be done through a different process. These removal procedures and this amendment for the charter is a law of general applicability. So you're setting precedent for all future sheriffs, all future elected officials. And so considering the individual circumstances here, make this appear to be a unconstitutional bill of attainder. So it should not be targeted, and your actions should not respond to an individual's conduct. That is not the appropriate channel for legislation. There should be used another process if that's your goal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lind, followed by AB. Julie, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. Julie Lind with the San Mateo Labor Council. I'm here to speak in favor of Consent Item Nineteen, the resolution in support of Teamsters Local Twenty Seven Eight Five members on strike against Flying Food Group at SFO. Let's be clear, no worker votes to go on strike lightly. The strike means going without a paycheck, and as a reminder, you can't collect unemployment either. It means you may lose your health care. It means stress for families, missed rent, and uncertainty. But when an employer refuses to negotiate in good faith, and when workers face unaffordable health care and wages that don't keep pace with the cost of living, they're left with no other choice. And that's why these workers have been on strike twenty-four-seven, literally twenty-four-seven, for nearly two months. This strike not only affects these workers and their families, it also disrupts airport operations, food supply chains, and impacts airline service. The economic ripple effect of prolonged labor disputes is real. Rep, or I'm sorry, resolution through fair negotiation is in everyone's best interest. Thank you, President Canepa, for bringing this forward, and thank you all for considering support.
Thank you. Three speakers, AB, followed by Erin Torme. AB, please unmute and begin.
Hey, sorry I haven't been able to change my name. I'm Andrew Boston. I'm in Seal Cove in Moss Beach. We've still had some, you know, over the last couple of weeks, you know, we've been trying to get access to our street to perform maintenance work that even last year was done by our local water district. Water district has indicated that they're going to be stepping away from servicing sewer pipes that they've maintained for over forty years. And, you know, that's one thing, but the bigger concern that all of us have is just around how, how we can manage coastal erosion that's happening in our neighborhood, and there's plenty of solutions. So I, you know, Supervisor Mueller has been really helpful in pushing this forward, and I thank you for your, your time and energy there. We'd love a cross-organization meeting to understand how we can all work together to, to solve and implement long-term solutions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Torme, followed by Sid Young. Erin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. This is Erin Torme, calling from, I'm a farmer out in Hapun Bay, and I'm the founder of Cosade Farmers Markets, which operates certified farmers markets for Hapun Bay and Pacifica, and until recently, Pascadero and Lommar. I start by saying I've always appreciated San Mateo County's evident desire to support the agricultural community and work toward a food system for San Mateo County that's economically viable, environmentally responsible, and socially just. It's a hard thing to do, and I've always really appreciated our county's affirmative stance in that case. I'm calling today because there is a farmer's market in every one of your districts, and a change that in the process by which San Mateo County Environmental Health Department now defines certified farmers markets. There's also a deep increase in the permit fees for both the farmer's market locations themselves and to the individual food vendors that participate alongside the farmers and ranchers in, in the farmer's markets in our county. The increased fees are challenged. Uh-oh.
Go ahead, continue.
By which those fees are now being collected, that are putting a real deep strain on all of us. There's a meeting tomorrow at the Environmental Health Department between the, between the Department of Agriculture, and I'm really hopeful that if there's any chance that any of you, I mean, I really appreciate Ray's, Mueller's involvement. I understand that Supervisor Spear is also going to help us sort this out, but it's a really serious problem. We've been working for nearly two years to try and get some resolution here, and I'm very hopeful that I might just draw on the support of the larger board because it impacts the whole county, not just me. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Our last speaker, Sid Young, please be unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sheri. I'd like to thank our supervisor for getting Caltrans out to address the highway wet spot on eastbound ninety-two where many crashes have been occurring. Also beg the county to fully fund the peg fees for Pacific Coast Television. I know their contract is coming up, and they were to get one point one, two-one percent peg fees for just the coast side, which they offer a valuable service, and they definitely deserve the full amount. Now it's time for the county to address the Seal Cove issues in Moss Beach, which include the county DPW's decision to not repair public roads in our area and the yellow tagging of nearly twenty homes in our small Bluff Top neighborhood. Since the mid-nineties, the county has shirked or deferred its maintenance of our roads always while selling new building permits to property owners of vacant lots. Now there's a permanent moratorium. Yet, when La Honda has experienced landslide issues, the county did address their issues since the mid-nineties. Please, we need, we need help at a neighborhood meeting. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller, in advance for scheduling something for our neighborhood as soon as you can.
Thank you, Sid. No further comments.
We have no more, no further comments, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll, we'll move to set the agenda and to prove the consent agenda items. My understanding is, is that we are pulling Item Forty-three. Is that correct through the county executive?
That's correct, President Canepa.
Great, thank you so much. May I get a motion?
Actually, I'd like to move Item Nineteen to the regular agenda.
And I would like to move Item Eighteen to the consent agenda. This was, the update didn't make it in on time before the agenda was published, but it, it should have been on the consent.
Okay. Are there any issues with that? What I'm going to ask relative to, to Item Nineteen is that we hear that as the first item before the, the regular agenda. And so with that, Supervisor Spear, would you like to make the motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Or do we have a roll call, please?
We can, sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to presentations and awards. We have five items today under the heading. We'll start with Item One, which is a presentation or proclamation designating the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as Emergency Medical Services Week. I'm sponsoring this sign, and we'll have a few things to say now about EMS Week. Today, we bring forward this proclamation to officially designate the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth as Emergency Medical Services Week in San Mateo County. This year's theme, EMS We Care for Everyone, powerfully captures the spirit of this profession rooted in compassion, grounded in skill, and open-heartly inclusive of everyone in need. Each day, EMS professionals across our county, paramedics, EMTs, dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, lifeguards, emergency nurses, physicians, educators, and dedicated volunteers stand ready to respond when we need them the most. They are the steady voice on the other end of a nine-one-one call, the skilled hands in the back of an ambulance, and the calm presence on chaotic scenes. They meet people in their most vulnerable moments and offer not just medical care, but hope. Their work is physically demanding and emotionally taxing. They work long hours, face unpredictable conditions, and often risk their own safety to save the lives of others. And they do not do it for accolades, but because they care deeply and unrelentlessly for this community. Our countywide EMS system is not just a network of services, it is a lifeline, one that reduces suffering, prevents loss, and brings critical care into homes, workplaces, schools, and streets. It's also a system constantly evolving to better serve our residents, embracing innovation, building partnerships, and expanding access to care with agility and vision. Behind that system is a workforce of dedicated individuals who never stop learning, training, and preparing, who remain steady at all times because emergencies don't wait. These are not just professionals, they are heroes. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the residents of San Mateo County, it is my privilege to bring forth this proclamation to say from the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Thank you for the lives you've saved, for the comfort you've offered, and for being the safety net that protects all of us day in and day out. I now would like to introduce Travis Kussman, Director of Emergency Medical Services here with the County of San Mateo, who will be sharing a few words before the presentation of an important video. Travis? Travis, before we, we do that, can you recognize? can you recognize some of the folks that are here? I see them behind us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. Good morning, honorable members of the board and county staff, executive leadership. I'm Travis Kusman. I'm the county's Director of Emergency Medical Services. With me this morning, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to actually call them up to the podium as well, are some key leaders from within our EMS system that are true partners and make all of this possible. We'll start with where the 911 call is received. Director Natasha Claris Spino, San Mateo County Public Safety Communications. Chief Ron Myers, Co-Executive Director, San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group. This is the Fire EMS JPA that provides paramedic first response. Regional Director Rick Ornellis from American Medical Response, the county's 911 paramedic ambulance services provider. Chief Matt Sampson, South San Francisco Fire Department, providing 911 paramedic first response and ambulance services within the city of South San Francisco. Dr. CJ Canopoli, Chief Executive Officer of San Mateo Medical Center, representing all hospitals within our EMS system this morning. Kent Kramer from Stanford Lifelight, representing Critical Care Air Ambulance Services. And then Chief David Norris, who's been a steady liaison to us from the local law enforcement community. So I don't know that I could say it any better than you, but I'll follow up with just some brief remarks, Supervisor Canepa, I appreciate it. Thank you so much to you, to the board, to county executive leadership for recognizing the vital healthcare safety net that the EMS system provides for our community. As you noted, this year's EMS Week theme, "We Care For Everyone," is truly fitting. It recognizes the dedication, the skill, and the compassion of our 911 systems' healthcare heroes working on the front lines who deliver lifesaving care to anyone in San Mateo County, whenever and wherever they may need it. At its core, our public-private partnership approach to EMS in this county puts the needs of our patients first, always. Our system's clinical performance is amongst the best in California and nationally. And frankly, other communities, both near and far, frequently seek to emulate it. Thank you again to yourself, Supervisor Canepa, members of the board and county leadership team. In closing, I'd like to share a brief video that's been disseminated to all providers within our EMS system. And happy EMS Week to all of you and our partners in the system. On behalf of San Mateo County and the EMS Agency, happy EMS Week. I'm Travis Kusman, the Director of our EMS system. This year's National EMS theme of "We Care For Everyone" is truly fitting to the service delivered by our EMS system. 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, our 911 EMS system resources stand ready, respond, and professionally meet the needs of anyone who calls upon us. Together, we provide a vital healthcare safety net that is readily accessible and dependable to the residents and visitors of San Mateo County. Thanks to the extraordinary commitment, effort, and capabilities of our frontline providers of emergency medicine, critical care experts, as well as the leadership and support structures which stand firmly behind them, our patients receive outstanding care. This past year, the San Mateo County EMS system responded to almost 70,000 calls for help, representing one or more people in need about every seven and a half minutes. Thanks to your collective efforts, our most critical patients, for example, stroke and cardiac, receive definitive care faster than the targeted benchmarks established by evidence-based science. Their clinical outcomes are also amongst the best in the state and nation. Thank you for the compassionate service that you provide, even under the most challenging circumstances. Please note that you are deeply respected and appreciated. It continues to be a great honor to support you.
Happy EMS Week 2025. My name's Greg Gilbert, and I'm your medical director. As someone who deeply respects the work you do every single day, I want you to say thank you for the amazing system that is San Mateo County EMS. I am so proud of the quality of care you deliver to our patients every day. Our cardiac arrest survival rates are truly unbeatable, and that's because of the teamwork and care that you provide. This week is about honoring you all-- paramedics, EMTs, dispatcher, law enforcement, behavioral specialists, and all prehospital providers because what you do is extraordinary. While others run away from crisis, you run towards it. You are the first line of care, the critical link between the scene and the hospital, and often the difference between life and death. This week and every week, I want you to know, you matter. Your skills, your heart, and your presence in San Mateo County are irreplaceable. Let this EMS Week be a reminder of how much you are appreciated, not just by your patients, but by your peers, by your EMS medical director, and your entire community. Stay safe, stay strong, and keep on being the incredible provider that you are.
I'm Brian Aiello, Assistant Director for the San Mateo County EMS Agency, and I want to thank you for the incredible contributions you make in our communities, day in and day out. No matter the time or place, no matter the illness or injury, you respond and deliver the highest level of care for every single one of our residents and visitors in need. It's because of your courage, commitment, and skill that San Mateo County continues to be an EMS system emulated across the state and a benchmark for high performance in emergency medical services. Thank you again for all that you do, and I hope that you feel a sense of pride and accomplishment as we roll into this year's EMS Week.
Hi, I'm Chad Henry, your EMS System Manager. We live in a world of uncertainty, and that uncertainty extends into the job that you do. It's all too common that we encounter our patients at a difficult time in their life. Emotions run high amongst our patients, family members, and bystanders. But despite this, your compassionate care is rendered to each and every request for service. EMS Week is a celebration of you, a time to recognize your contributions and the sacrifices you make each day you put on your uniform. To each of our 911 call-takers and dispatchers, our law enforcement partners, public safety first responders, EMTs and paramedics, thank you. Thank you for all that you do in caring for our communities. On behalf of the EMS Agency and the greater San Mateo County community, thank you. Happy EMS Week.
Hi, my name is Kelly McGinty. This year's theme for EMS Week is "We Care For Everyone", and that is what you do every day. You make a difference in our community by providing crucial prehospital treatments for everyone in this county. Thank you for your perseverance, dedication, and service, and happy EMS Week.
Hi, everyone. Happy EMS Week. I wanted to thank all of our EMS professionals for the incredible work you do every day. Your commitment to our community and your constant readiness through trainings, drills, and exercises truly reflects the heart of emergency preparedness in San Mateo County. You show us what it means to care for everyone in every moment. We're proud to support and stand beside you day in and day out. Thank you so much. Happy EMS Week.
I'm Melissa Pouch, a manager and duty officer here at San Mateo County EMS Agency. On behalf of all of us here at the agency, I want to wish you a happy EMS Week. This theme for EMS Week this year is "We Care For Everyone." And we know that this is not just a slogan, but this is something that you all live day in and day out. With every call, every life saved, and every act of compassion, you all show our community what it means to care without hesitation. We know that you all provide more than medical expertise. You also provide a calm under pressure and an unwavering commitment to service. Whether it's providing prevention education or lifesaving care, we know that your impact goes above and beyond that of an actual emergency. We want to take this week to honor your courage, your commitment, and your deep sense of duty, and thank you for answering the call to serve, to heal, but above all, to care.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any comments from the board? Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I want to thank you all for taking the time to be here this morning. I have had the pleasure of working directly with some of you, and I want to thank you for all of your contributions to our community. It's very true that you are all the ones that show up in times of crisis or support those that show up in times of crisis, and that's equally as important. And as someone that has had those kinds of interactions, especially when I was much younger, I can't tell you what it means to know that there are warm, helpful hands there in really dark times for some families. And I just feel really proud that in our county we have this kind of service available to our residents, and I'm thankful that you all do the lifesaving work that you do. Thank you.
Yes. Supervisor Mueller?
I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the residents of the Coastside so I know how much they value collectively your ability to provide them with services. That's really top-notch, given how isolated that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just give quick remarks. Thank you for all that you do for all of our communities. We know, and just in your presentation, you are dealing with people when they're at a crisis. So your ability to calm them down and make them know that they're being taken care of is very important. So again, thank you for everything that you do.
Thanks.
Thank you all for being the lifeline for so many of us. Travis, maybe you could tell us about the response times that we can be very proud of?
Yeah, sure. You know, we look at a multitude of performance measures in our system. We look obviously both at, you know, response times. Those are critical for our most critical patients that have time-dependent emergencies. And then obviously, we also look at clinical outcomes. Did we assess the patient to have the right condition? Rendered the right treatment? And then what was ultimately their outcome? And as we look across that broad spectrum of metrics in our system, we're leading not just, you know, within the state of California, but also nationally. And we're doing it with a very forward-leaning model where we're providing an advanced life support response with paramedics, both on that initial fire response and then the ambulance that's coming into transport as well. So we're very consistent in that. We look at it every day, every week, every month, all year, to make sure that the service is available 24/7 reliably to the community.
So in San Mateo County, we are number one in the state.
Oh, I didn't go quite there.
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
I didn't go quite there. But we are very fast. And yes, depending on what metric you look at, we could very well be number one in the state. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from Chambers, Chief Dave Norris.
Thank you. And thank you, supervisors, for bringing this proclamation forward. Also want to say thank you to Supervisor Mueller, Supervisor Gourche, for your kind words about the memory of Dylan Taylor where all mourning in Menlo Park. My name is Dave Norris. I serve as the Police Chief for the City of Menlo Park as well as the men and women who serve Menlo Park as their police department. Just wanted to take a minute to recognize and express our gratitude for our EMS partners. In addition to my duties as the Police Chief in Menlo Park, I also serve on the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association as liaison to the EMS folks. And what I can tell you is-- Supervisor Canepa, to your words from the proclamation that we just heard, often these scenes that we go to, especially when all of us involved in the public safety world come together, are very chaotic and can be chaotic and confusing. And what I appreciate most about EMS is their leadership by example, their sense of care and concern for every single member of that scene, no matter what their role is, sets a great example to the rest of us in the public safety world because our job should be to care for everyone in that scene, no matter their role. And so I'm most grateful for that, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chief Norris. Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. We do have one hand raised for Martin Fox. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Congratulations. I really appreciate the bravery that all of you demonstrate. And I asked the board to seriously consider integrating the emergency mental health services that are available to bring them up to the standards that the emergency medical services community has already achieved. It's time to end the artificial distinction between emergency medical services and emergency mental health services. Emergencies are emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. No further hands, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Before I make the motion, I really want to thank you. I know many of you, Travis. Thank you for your continued leadership, your steadiness. Ron, Rick, Dr. Canopoli. A lot of you folks have really sort of set the example throughout the state about what coordination and collaboration mean. It's great to see representatives from North County, South County, the coast. So I just really want to thank you on behalf of this board for all the wonderful work that you do. Natasha, thank you. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye, and thanks to South San Francisco for 50 years of practice.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gourche?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll go down and give you this proclamation. We'll take a picture.
Yeah, we do. I think we can do it if everyone just-- maybe back a little farther and move down. There you go. Okay, we got it. One, two, three. Okay, perfect.
All right. We'll now move to item two, which is a resolution honoring and commending Sandy Arnot on being named President of the National Association on being named President of the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo and myself. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, everyone. It's my great privilege to introduce this honorary resolution, recognizing a true brave, a true trailblazer. That's a tongue twister for me right now, this early in the morning. In San Mateo County Government, our very own treasurer, tax collector, Sandy Arnot. Sandy has not only served the county with distinction for over thirty-five years, she made history, history not everyone realizes, by becoming the first woman treasurer in San Mateo County and the first Latina ever elected countywide in this county. That just by itself is remarkable and worthy of, of being known. And I will now highlight some of Treasurer Arnot's leadership and accomplishments. Again, history that not everyone really knows, but should know. So our county's investments are uniquely stable and strong, even in turbulent economic times. Just last year, Treasurer Arnot oversaw investments that yielded an impressive $295 million for the county, and that's money that goes directly into services for our residents. She is a true champion for making government more accessible. Through her leadership, our, her office launched a real-time chat line to help taxpayers and to help taxpayers in real time, and then also had mobile drop boxes for seniors and persons with disabilities installed throughout the county. And most recently, Treasurer Arnot brought Easy Smart Pay to our county, which for the first time in our county's history allows taxpayers to pay their yearly property taxes in monthly installments. So if you didn't know that, now you do. It's available now. It's very new. And her legislative experience at the state level led to the passage of a bill to ensure school bond accountability, a bill that empowers tax collectors to seek, and a bill that empowers tax collectors to seek external legal counsel when needed. And most recently, Sandy was recognized nationally when she was named President of the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers, proudly representing our county in the entire nation. Sandy, on behalf of this board and the many residents whose lives you've touched through your leadership and commitment, you deserve this honorary resolution. And now I'd like to pass it to my co-sponsor, President Canepa.
Great. Sandy, just want to say congratulations. Thank you for your leadership. You're a District Five resident. I think what a lot of people don't know is that Sandy, you know, besides being treasurer, is really someone who's based in our community, whether it's going to various community events or just really being present, whether it's through the chamber, whether it's through the Daly City Public Library Associates. But Sandy, from the bottom of my heart, I just really want to thank you for all you do for this county, not only as treasurer, but outside as just being someone who's civic-minded. So thank you.
Thank you. And actually, I forgot to mention one thing, which is that our county's management of our money essentially through Sandy's leadership is so impressive that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District chooses our county to manage their assets as well. And that's for the surrounding nine Bay Area counties. So that says a lot as well. Thank you, Sandy, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Canepa, Supervisor Corzo, and members of the board. Thank you so much for this honor. It has and continues to be my privilege to serve as this county's treasurer, tax collector. Also serving as President of the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers, known as NACFO, has been a wonderful opportunity for me. I'm proud to be the fifth California president since the association's inception in 1954 and the first from San Mateo County. I've always enjoyed being involved with NACFO, being aware of what situations are occurring nationwide that perhaps haven't filtered down to California yet, allows me to bring back information to this county and my association as a heads-up for consideration and preparation of potential impacts, vice versa, on California issues. It's so important to be as involved and educated on what's going on countrywide in order to be best prepared to handle situations that impact our world of finance and our constituents. First and foremost, my primary responsibility is to the residents of this county, and I will continue to do my best as treasurer, tax collector, for as long as voters have me in the position. I will continue to seek and implement more efficient tax payment solutions to make the process more convenient and propose changes to legislation whenever it's in the best interest of our taxpayers. I hope the recently added features of Easy Smart Pay for installment payments and the expansion of our chat line to 24/7 access proves helpful to many. I'd like to thank my daughter, my friends and staff who are here. Today, I wouldn't be where I am today without your support. I'm very grateful and humbled by the kind words of recognition, and I thank you all again for this resolution.
Thank you so much, Sandy, Treasurer Arnot. I also just want to say that we know that there are difficult times in our county right now, and I want to thank you for being an example to follow, a leader, someone that's very ethical, not just in your personal life, but in how you manage our finances, and a Latina that has led in this county with integrity, transparency. And I just, I deeply admire you. So thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Do we have any public comment? Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click Raise Hand to Comment on Item Two Honoring the Legendary Sandy Arnot. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Cradle.
There is a speaker here, and I thought we had other speakers. Am I mistaken? No? Okay.
It fell to the ground. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I have one speaker, Rami, is it? Rami, I should, sir, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, and thank you, Sandy. When I saw that you were going to be honored in today's agenda, I couldn't help but stop by and just lend my words. Local government has always been seen as sort of a black box to me, where I personally couldn't comprehend any of the inner workings that make it function, specifically around taxes and how it gets collected and how we, how we conduct our investments as a county. So I really wanted to stop by and show my appreciation towards you for taking the time to walk me through your process with grace and transparency, while also lending your ear to hear my thoughts and concerns about our ethics and really quelling those concerns at the same time. Your commendation is well-earned, and here's to many more achievements. Once again, thank you so much.
Okay, no one else? Okay. Sorry. I, I move to approve this honorary resolution.
Roll call, please. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, now we'd like to take a picture, and Sandy, feel free to have anyone in the audience who you'd like to join, join us.
I can send it to your staff, too.
Oh, yeah, if you can, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, everyone. Oh, you all have to, you have to get over here. Can you guys, can you come over here?
Oh, go over that side.
Over this side?
Yeah.
Yeah. She's not going to be in the picture. You have to, yeah. Just come over here on his side. Yeah, okay. Okay. Oops, she's still cut off there. One, two, three. Okay, that was tough.
All right, we'll now move to item three, which is action to approve the Presentation of a Proclamation Designating June 2025 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Questioning, Intersex, Asexual Ally, and Two-Spirit Pride Month, and to accept the Annual Report of the San Mateo County LGBTQIA+ Commission. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo.
I am truly honored to bring forth this proclamation, designating June 2025 as LGTBQIA+ Pride Month. I would like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Supervisor Pine for his leadership in creating this commission in 2014, an initiative that at the time was the first of its kind in the state of California. His vision and commitment laid a strong foundation for equity and inclusion. And as an ally, I stand in solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, not only today, but every day, in a time when we know that fundamental rights and identities continue to be challenged across our country. We know it's more important now than ever to affirm our support and elevate the voices of those who have been marginalized. This proclamation serves as both a celebration and a call to action, a reminder that equity, dignity, and respect must guide our path forward. Together, let us continue to foster a community where everyone can live openly, authentically, and without fear. Here to accept the proclamation is Erin Adriano, co-chair of the commission and a current student at Stanford University. And joining him is Vanessa Lemos Tapia, who joined the commission last year in 2024 and is a co-founder of the First Teamsters Local 350 Women's Committee. Welcome.
...supervisors, Mr. Callagie, county staff, and members of the public. Thank you. My name is Vanessa Lemos Tapia. Thank you for having us today. My pronouns are she/her. And on behalf of the LGBTQI Commission, I'm thrilled to accept the Pride Month proclamation and share information about our work, along with some local resources. Our commission was founded in 2014, and as Supervisor Corzo mentioned, is, was, is California's first LGBTQI commission and serves as an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors, working to make San Mateo County a welcoming and safe place for LGBTQI-plus community members to thrive. We meet on the third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and we welcome all community members to join us. Move on to the... So here's a presentation of our commission here. And as mentioned, we meet the third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., unless otherwise noted. And one of our key accomplishments this year is the passage of SB 59, Protection of Privacy for Transgender Adults. And we want to thank you for your letter of support for this important bill, which helps safeguard the privacy of transgender individuals. Another key initiative we're proud of is the Inclusion Community Campaign, which promotes LGBTQIA+ Visibility Year-Around. Erin will share more about that later in the presentation. On this slide, you'll see a photo of one of our commission members attending a flag-raising ceremony. These moments of visibility are powerful reminders that our community is seen, valued, and celebrated, not just during Pride Month, but throughout the entire year. Next, I'll introduce you to the San Mateo County Pride Center. The San Mateo County Pride Center is over a decade in the making and is the first-ever LGBTQ+ community center in San Mateo County. It serves as a safe and welcoming space for LGBTQ+ individuals to access behavioral health services, connect with others, share stories, build relationships, and grow together. For the LGBTQ community across the peninsula, it's a place to call home. Now, I'd like to introduce you to the newest LGBTQ+ organization in our region, Coast Pride. Coast Pride is a community-led organization in San Mateo County dedicated to enhancing support, visibility, and awareness to, for LGBTQI-plus individuals and families along the coast. Its mission is to make the coast side from Pacifica to Pescadero a welcoming and safe space for all LGBTQIA+ community members and so that they can live authentically and thrive. Through advocacy, support services, and community-building initiative, Coast Pride works to foster kindness, inclusivity, and belonging for all. Now, to guide us through the next part of our presentation, I'm pleased to hand it over to co-chair Erin Aldrano, who will share more about our ongoing initiatives.
Morning, Supervisors. Thank you for having us here. So before I talk about our initiatives, I'd also like to shout out the Pride Initiative, which is actually the county's oldest LGBTQ group. They're founded by the Office of Diversity and Equity under BHRS, and they're actually in their eighteenth year. So yeah, as you can see, there are many different LGBTQ orgs throughout the county. So what providing resources looks like is a collaborative partnership between all of us. And in the county, there's no one-stop shop for queer resources and services. So it's through these continued working relationships that we're able to support our community. So back to the Pride Initiative, they're actually responsible for hosting the Pride Celebration. So this is the largest family-free, family-friendly, free, and sober Pride event in the Bay. It takes place Saturday, June 14th, and the parade starts at 10:00 a.m. in downtown San Mateo and ends in Central Park, where the celebration will begin. This event is coordinated by the Pride Initiative via the Office of Diversity and Equity. And while I'm here, I'd also like to give you all a big thanks, Board of Supervisors, for your donations. You guys are actually the Pride, you are Pride's largest sponsors. And without you guys, this event really wouldn't be able to happen. So like, many thanks. Your support truly helps everyone, and it helps establish San Mateo County as a safe place. Also, I'd like to mention, as you guys already know, that the county is raising the Progress Pride Flag on June 2nd at 10:30 a.m. Special thanks to Supervisor Corzo for your support on this, and we appreciate your continued support of Pride Flag raisings and proclamations. I think now more than ever, it's especially important to increase our visibility, and it's gestures like these that are critical to signaling to queer people that they're safe in this county. And it's this mission to expand visibility in our county that is rooted in one of the commission's current projects, which I'll talk about. So the Inclusion Community Campaign, or the ICC, is our current project, which we just launched this April. So we established it with the mindset that we want to extend queer LGBTQ visibility in the county, not only in June, but year-round. And to that end, we're inviting community, the community to become ambassadors of inclusion and to become ambassadors to advocate in their own respective cities. It's a great opportunity for people to learn about how to bring inclusion and visibility for our people, especially queer teens and older adults. So we're currently trying to get the word out on this project. So if you know anyone in your network who may be interested, feel free to let us know. But yeah, in the future, we're interested in looking into houselessness in LGBTQI populations throughout the county. And with that, thank you. Like Vanessa said, we meet the third Tuesday of every month. And if any of y'all are interested in the work that we're doing, feel free to stop by. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for that update. Oh, sorry, through the chair. I always forget that part.
No, it's, it's all right. Do we have any public comments? Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click Raise Hand to Comment on Item Three. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Do any of my colleagues want to speak on this item? Okay, Supervisor Corzo.
I just wanted to wrap up by saying we are grateful for your yearly report, but also for the work that you do throughout the entire year. And I want you to know that you have our board's support and you have a place here in our community, and we're committed to your safety and belonging and inclusion. And it's an honor to know you all and work with you.
Thank you.
And with that, oh, did you want to make comments?
I just want to say, you know, in honor of Pride Month, we're looking forward to celebrating. I think I'm out of, I'm traveling that day. But I want you to know that you're seen, you're heard. We appreciate you. We stand with you. And we look forward to celebrating the flag raising and whatever we can do to be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo.
Okay, I'd like to move to proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and accept the Annual Report.
Right, it's our second.
Second.
Okay. Madam Roll call, please. Sure. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, we'll now move to item four, which is the Presentation of a Proclamation Designating May 2025 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Gochet and myself, Supervisor Gochet.
Thank you, President Canepa. I'm honored.
I'm honored to join in recognizing Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in San Mateo County. As we celebrate the incredible diversity and strength of the AA-NHPI communities, I also want to take a moment to honor the trailblazers whose leadership has paved the way for so many of us. From Congresswoman Patsy Mink of Hawaii, the first woman of color elected to the U.S. House of Representatives, the first Asian American woman to serve in Congress, and a co-author of Title IX, whose legacy continues to open doors for girls and women across the country. To Mama Dee, a beloved community leader from my hometown of East Palo Alto, who fought tirelessly for equity, justice, and education for all families, and reminded us that community care is leadership. May she rest in peace. To the present-day leaders right here in our community, like Daly City Councilmember Justlyn Malala, San Mateo County Councilmember Nicole Fernandez, and from District Four, Redwood City Councilmembers Jeff G. and Marciela Padilla, whose services reflect the ongoing commitment of AA-NHPI voices shaping policy and uplifting our communities. These are just a few of the many leaders, named and unnamed, whose courage, advocacy, and love for community continue to light the path forward. Let's carry that legacy with intention. Let's ensure our systems of care reflect cultural humility and meet people where they are. And as what President Canepa said, let's continue to invest not just in programs, but in people, because when AA-NHPI communities thrive, we all thrive. Thank you again, and looking forward to hearing from today's speakers and continuing this important work together. Back to you, President Canepa.
Great. Thank you so much, Supervisor Gochet. I'm really excited to introduce our speakers. And if you could come up, Dr. J. Africa, Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services; Allison Suzuki, the Co-Chair of the Chinese Health Initiative; Kristi Morales Kumasawa, the Co-Chair of Filipino Mental Health Initiative; as well as Epi Amavea, the Co-Chair of the Pacific Islanders Initiative. And I believe we have Stephanie here with us as well, so thank you, and thank you all for being here today.
Well, hello, and good morning. Thank you so much for having us. Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, County Executive, Mr. Calagui, County Attorney, Mr. Niblin, County Staff, and Members of the San Mateo County community. My name is Tia Bell. I am the Health Equity Initiative Coordinator for Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Office of Diversity and Equity, and I'm also the County Co-Chair for the Pacific Islander Initiative. Thank you so much, President Canepa and Supervisor Gochet, for your sponsorship and cosponsorship for this proclamation. We're here to uplift Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and the work of the Health Equity Initiatives, the Chinese Health Initiative, the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, and the Pacific Islander Initiative. The co-chairs of these initiatives will speak on the work they have done in their communities to advance behavioral health equity and address health disparities. Next to speak will be Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Dr. J. Africa.
Good morning again. Just a reminder that the Asian American and Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian population is really a big contributor in this county. Thirty-three point one percent identify as Asian Americans, and about 1.4 of individuals identify as Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders. Now, we also know in these communities that knowledge of behavioral health issues are low due to cultural stigma, lack of information, language barriers. And so it's really very important that these initiatives, the three that are out of seven in Behavioral Health of Recovery Services, really focus their work on really addressing and lifting up behavioral health resources in the community. We know, for example, that depression is very high among Filipinos individuals. Forty-five percent of young people in San Mateo County that identify as Filipinos actually are at risk of depression and suicidal ideation. And we also know that hopelessness, specifically among Pacific Islander seventh graders, are high in this county. So it's really very important for us to lift up and call other folks to help provide information and actually decrease the stigma that we have related to behavioral health issues. It's really an honor for me to be back in behavioral health, to continue the work that we've created, actually, since 2007 with the Health Equity Initiatives, and also really grateful for Pride, with the Pride Initiative, that also is part of many of the Health Equity Initiatives. So now I'd like to introduce Allison Suzuki, who will talk about the Chinese Health Initiative. It's Kristi Louis.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Louis Meggie, or Kristi Louis, and I'm the current CHI Co-Chair. I also want to acknowledge all the incredible CHI co-chairs prior to me. The Chinese Health Initiative was created in 2007 to join people together in working to improve the health and well-being of our Chinese communities. We care about the emotional and physical health of all Chinese individuals, families, and youth living in San Mateo County. Some of our main accomplishments include music therapy for Asian/Asian Americans. This unique program integrates music and peer support groups to reduce stigma around mental health and increase behavioral health literacy. Secondly, culturally responsive education. She hosts community meetings that feature educational presentations. These gatherings provide opportunities for learning and discussions of issue impacting Asian communities. Lastly, elevating community voices. She offers one of the few dedicated spaces for Chinese-speaking residents and allies to come together, raise concerns, and shape solutions. Community members have voiced the need for more linguistically and culturally appropriate services, such as legal support for immigrants and in-home care for Chinese-speaking seniors. These conversations guide CHI's advocacy and help ensure that community voices are reflected in policy and systems change efforts. I'll now introduce Stephanie Ballon from Filipino Mental Health Initiative. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Stephanie Ballon. I go by pronouns she/her. I am one of the co-chairs of the Filipino Mental Health Initiative alongside Kristi Morales Kumasawa, who couldn't make it today. So FMHI works to increase access to culturally and linguistically attuned behavioral health and other wellness services, reduce stigma, and engage the Filipina XO community through outreach and education. And as Dr. J. Africa mentioned, about forty-five percent of Filipina XO youth in San Mateo County are at risk for depression and suicidal ideation due to increased socio-political stressors exacerbating distress among youth and the general community. In our work, we utilize a decolonized lens and Filipino indigenous values of kapwa, which means togetherness, and ginawa, which means total wellness, well-being, in supporting community wellness needs. We provide holistic wellness spaces like Kapwa Soul Sessions online and also the driving force behind the creation of Kapwa Cultural Center, which is the first mental health and wellness-focused social enterprise in Daly City. So thank you. Next to speak will be Pacific Islander Initiative, Epi Amavea.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Epi Leonel Amavi, and I'm the current Community Co-Chair for Pacific Islander Initiative on behalf of Samwon Solutions. The Pacific Islander Initiative was established in 2006, and we exist to serve Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander consumers and courageous community partners in San Mateo County. Our efforts are guided directly in response to community needs assessments, impact surveys, and feedback from our consumers. Some of our community partners are Asian American Recovery Services, the Nusay Family Partnership, Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, Pacific Islander Education in STEM, Samwon Solutions, Talamo Fortongans, and Fatasi Youth Services. The initiative has two main goals. One is to empower our Pacific Islander community to access services, and we do this by enhancing access to behavioral health services using culturally relevant strategies and practices, organize events, as well as offering training and workshops that empower our communities. And we aid the development of Pacific Islanders entering into the behavioral health and recovery workforce by collaborating and utilizing resources to engage and support our Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander community. I'd like to quickly ask our Pacific Islander Initiative members who are in the room to please stand in recognition and in solidarity. And very quickly, before I introduce the next speaker, you've been presented with a lot of data today that shows the exact need for our communities. And in the same note, I want to also celebrate the work that's being done here by the Health Equity Initiative. This is not the same community that you saw nineteen years ago, and that is largely in part by the support of having the existence of health equity initiatives in San Mateo County. I am so honored to be here, to be one of the representatives to receive the proclamation, and I'm equally excited about seeing how the supervisors in our county are going to be activating this proclamation. Next, I would like to introduce Regina Tuitelle, who will share some of her experiences as a Pacific Islander Initiative member. Thank you so much.
Good morning, President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, Executives, Attorneys, and Staff of San Mateo County. As a member of the Pacific Islander Initiative, having culturally responsive mental and behavioral health initiatives like PII has had a huge impact on my life. Prior to getting connected with the Pacific Islander Initiative and partner programs such as Pioneers under Asian American Recovery Services, I was visibly introverted and shy. Today, I feel comfortable enough to speak up here because of the support and encouragement I have received from these programs, where mental health, equity, and inclusion are highlighted in these spaces to create a safe and supportive environment where people like me are empowered to speak up on behalf of my Pacific Islander community. Thank you. Next to speak will be Marcus To, who will share his experiences with behavioral health for the Chinese Health Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. Hi, my name is Marcus To, and as you probably can guess, I'm a Chinese-American. I wanted to talk today about my experience with my mental health as a Chinese-American. This year, during... As a high school junior, I began to experience some mental health challenges and started having feelings of loneliness, isolation, fear of missing out, hopelessness, and eventually depression. It mostly stemmed from comparing myself to my classmates, which made me feel like my life was just so boring and unexciting. I felt like I was missing out on the high school experience I should have and that I was doing something very wrong. It seemed like everyone was so much happier than me and just having a better life. While writing and reflecting on this, I realized that my Chinese identity definitely played a role in my mental health journey. My parents prioritized ideals of hard work and focused on academics, which had been fulfilling to me. But suddenly, this year, that changed. I began to strongly desire and seek fun, pleasure, and excitement, causing conflict between the traditional hard-working ethic. On top... Not to say I didn't want to work hard anymore, but it wasn't making me very happy and content. On top of this, I had a hard time building connection with others and would feel really isolated at times. At school, I would often feel out of place and even inferior, as none of the popular kids were Asian. To be honest, at times, I wouldn't really like being Chinese, and I wanted to be someone else. Flash forward to now, and I still frequently struggle, but I am more compassionate towards myself and have been able to come to terms with my identity more. On my journey, learning techniques like mindfulness, positive thinking, and gratitude journaling have, to name a few, have been very helpful. I'm not gonna lie, many days can still be a challenge, but this year has shown me that I am capable of pushing through and that the best things come from accepting and embracing my true self. I have become proud of who I am, and I'm proud to be a Chinese-American. Thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough to close on those. Yeah, that was incredible. So, thank you for your time and for listening to the work that our Health Equity Initiatives and our lived experience folks here provided to you. If you're interested in wanting to join the Health Equity Initiatives, you can go ahead and scan that QR code right there. And then, information about CHI and FMHI and Pacific Islander Initiative meeting times are up there as well. If you have any questions, or you want to come and hang out at a meeting, or just say hi, come on through. You can give me an email or send me a call. My name is Tia Bell. See you next time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tia. Are there any comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for having the courage to wear your heart on your sleeve and uplift your experiences. I think it makes us stronger when we recognize that we can be from different walks of life, but we have a lot of things in common. And we have a lot of work to do to make sure that each of our communities feels seen, included, respected, and safe. So thank you so much.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
In Zoom, please click to comment for item four, AA-NHPI Heritage Month. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much. I just want to thank you, Tia, and I want to thank you, Dr. J., Stephanie. A lot of the work that you guys do is really community-driven, and the impact that you have, obviously, is reflected there. And that's just one story of many stories. So as the President of the Board of Supervisors and this board, we're extremely, extremely proud of the work that you do day in and day out. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Sylvia. Thank you, Sylvia, for all your work.
Yes, we couldn't have done this without Sylvia. And also want to recognize our new Co-Chair for the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, Francesca Reyes.
Thank you, Francesca. With that, we'll have Supervisor Gochet. Will you be willing to make the motion to approve this item? I'll second.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right.
Well, all right. Thank you.
Before we move to the next item, I've been advised that we have a public comment through the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's one speaker who wants to speak on this regular public comment, so we'll give him a minute. So Mike Ling, please come up, and you'll have a minute.
Good morning, all the Supervisors. And having... Living in San Mateo County for more than forty years, and you see my gray hair, but this is the very first time I joined a meeting. And I like to make an opinion about the airplane noise, which is affecting a lot of people who reside in, especially, South San Francisco, Daly City alike. Daly City alike. And for example, last night, and actually for the past few months, every night after 11:00 PM, the planes just fly over our roof, you know, like less than 1,000 feet. It's torture. It's very detrimental to our physical and mental health. And I know that has a lot to do, because San Francisco Airport belongs to San Francisco in a way, right? But I hope our, I hope our county supervisor can have a strong approach to the San Francisco City Hall to ever improve, you know? Because if you look at the map, you know, the planes are very easy to detour. I wouldn't say detour. You go around the map. You can go around the bay. Why you have to fly over the residential? You know, as we've been tortured for more than 40 years. That's long enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much for your public comment. We next have item five, which is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring and Commending the San Mateo County Department of Housing in recognition of its 20th anniversary. This item is again sponsored by Supervisor Gochet and myself. Supervisor Gochet, could I ask you to please say some words about this item?
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. We're here today to celebrate a major milestone, the 20th anniversary of San Mateo County Department of Housing, and to recognize May as Affordable Housing Month. This isn't just an anniversary. It is a moment to reflect on two decades of impactful service, visionary approaches, and deep commitment to housing equity in one of the most expensive housing markets in the country. At the heart of the department's work is a clear mission, to collaborate with partners as a catalyst to increase the supply of affordable housing and create opportunities for people of all income levels and abilities to prosper by supporting livable and thriving communities. This mission is aspirational, just as it is operational. It guides every funding decision, every program design, and every community partnership, and it has delivered results. One of the department's greatest strengths is its ability to adapt to changing needs, lead with purpose, and implement forward-thinking solutions that respond to the evolving realities of our region. Their accomplishments didn't happen by accident. They are the result of a mission-driven staff and strong partnerships with local governments, nonprofits, developers, advocates, and community members. It is this collaborative approach that has allowed San Mateo County to lead the way in housing innovation and impact. As we look ahead, the same spirit of collaboration and this dedication will be essential. The need for safe, stable, and affordable housing is as urgent as ever. And while the challenges remain great, so too is our confidence in the department's proven ability to rise and respond. Today, we adopt this resolution with both pride in the department's accomplishments and resolve to keep moving forward. Please join me in welcoming Ray Hodges, Director of San Mateo County Department of Housing, as he shares more about the department's journey, its impact, and its vision for the future. Thanks, Ray.
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor Gochet and President Canepa. Good morning, honorable board members, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Ray Hodges, Director at the Department of Housing. And for our 20-year anniversary at DOH this morning, I'm joined by seven members of the team at DOH who were here 20 years ago, in 2005, when we were established as a department. Debbie McIntyre, Diane Danes, Arlina Ramirez, Pedro Fonseca, Elizabeth Fernandez, Inga Godin, and Lori Martin Davis. Do you guys want to stand up? May is also Affordable Housing Month, when we celebrate our commitment and progress toward creating and preserving homes for persons at all income levels in San Mateo County. And over the past 20 years, the Department of Housing has grown quite a bit, reflecting the need to do, to work on this. So, we're helping more residents find affordable housing through expanded rental assistance programs administered by the Housing Authority and by collaborating with our cities and community partners to build and preserve thriving, diverse, affordable communities. With creativity and dedication, our staff explored and piloted multiple innovative housing solutions like the Affordable Housing Fund, the Family Self-Sufficiency Voucher Program, Project Home Key, landlord incentives for our vouchers, the Mobile Home Loan Program, rental subsidies targeting a range of unhoused populations, the Second Unit Center, the Employee Down payment Assistance Program, the Farm Labor Housing Loan Program, and many others, and being granted Housing Authority Moving to Work Agency status from HUD. Every dollar invested by the county in these efforts unlocks other federal, state, local, and especially private resources, which allows us to significantly leverage the county's contributions toward housing affordability. DOH has also been a catalyst to launch award-winning housing initiatives like 21 Elements and Home for All that would bring together community stakeholders to develop pathways forward for our community to provide the healthy, safe, and affordable homes for all. So, finally, I want to thank your board, your board for its commitment and your support of our work at DOH and your steady investment in our vision of creating vibrant, diverse neighborhoods where everyone can have an affordable place to call home. So, on behalf of the DOH team, we're honored to receive the proclamation celebrating the department's 20th anniversary. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. You know, I wanted to just read some interesting facts. Over the past two decades, the department has exceeded that goal, provided rental assistance for over 5,500 families, supporting nearly 700 new vouchers in the last five years, and investing over $375 million in affordable housing projects. These results, over two decades, this is rather amazing, have resulted in 4,939 new housing units across San Mateo County. When you think about housing just on an individual basis and what it means to people, Mr. Hodges and I had an incredible opportunity to go to the ribbon-cutting of the second phase of Midway in that affordable housing development, which is the largest affordable housing development in San Mateo County. But just to see what you've been able to accomplish, Ray, with our partners, whether it's the cities, whether it's, you know, local jurisdictions. Housing is something that's embedded in our DNA, and we're going to continue to do more housing. Now, Ray, I'd like to ask you for personal privilege to speak of someone who's done many great things in San Mateo County, who I've known for over 25 years, and that's Mr. Fonseca. Mr. Fonseca, for many of you who don't know, yeah, give it up. Give it up for...
So, you know, I've known Pedro through his work through Midway. Always fair, always driven to serving the residents of the Bay Shore community. He's truly iconic, and I mean that respectfully, and has really had an amazing impact. I felt compelled to say that to you because I know there are many instances and cases, some we agreed with, some we disagreed with. But your professionalism and your judgment, the county of San Mateo is lucky to have someone like you, my friend, so I'm glad you're here.
Mr. President, can I just add to the mix that one of the first things I did when I was with the county council's office at the time was to work with Mr. Fonseca, actually, on Matters Out at Midway. So, he was one of the early managers who I had an opportunity to work with, who kind of showed me the way the county operated.
No, that's great. Pedro, you're beloved by everyone. With that, are there any comments? Yes. Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point out that in Cal Matters today, they announced that residents with an annual income of up to $109,000 in San Mateo County are now considered low income. So, it behooves us to do everything we can to create more workforce housing, because all of these people are working. I yield back.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments?
I want to just say thank you, Supervisor Spear, for that comment. And that just goes back to the work that we're doing through the housing project and the executive team. We had an opportunity to join on to the Sheridan project that will deliver workforce housing in the county as well. I'm looking forward to more of those opportunities, because I do agree we need additional workforce housing in this county.
Yes.
I just want to thank you and all of the folks who have been a part of the Department of Housing in the past decades for doing the really hard work of seeing the need for affordable housing increase while having not every tool at your disposal. I think, you know, we expect a lot from your department without remembering that there are local governments, there are cities. We, as a county, have a lot of power to help give you more tools. So, I just want to make that a call to action for us to really think about what we can do differently to empower you more, to make a bigger impact, because we know that the need has only multiplied in the past decades for affordable housing. We are probably the least affordable we've ever been. And that is not through your making, but it can be through your empowerment that we shift in the right direction and make sure that our residents can afford to live here. And I want to also add that I think your department has really unique insight into, you know, who our most vulnerable residents are through the work that you do to make sure that they get housed, that they get support from your department. And that is not easy work, and there are complex application processes to go through. But no one can make it through without the support of you and your department. So, I want to thank you for all of that work. And, you know, I truly think that our local governments have to really reflect on how we got to this place of being so unaffordable and how we have the responsibility to lead us out of it. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam, please proceed.
In Zoom, you can click for item number five. To celebrate the Department of Housing's 20th anniversary, we have one hand raised for Sid Young. Please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. It's a very important subject, housing. I know the city of Half Moon Bay, because they have a budget deficit, they rely heavily on San Mateo County for any kind of new additional housing, like the farm worker mobile homes that are coming these days, and also probably 555 Kelly, which probably won't happen right away. But they also put in an ordinance that makes each individual property owner that happens to own a rental within the city limits pay a fee and then register their rental unit, regardless of whether it falls under the, sorry, Costa-Hawkins Act. So, I don't think it's a good idea to ask cities to put the burden of their housing on individual homeowners. I personally know one woman who sold three rentals in Half Moon Bay after they put that ordinance in, and they just recently re-upped it for a whole nother year, even though it lost the city money. So, kindly think of that in the future, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further speakers, Mr. President.
Supervisor Mueller?
I just wanted to say thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm seeing no additional comments. Supervisor Gochet, would you like to move this item?
So moved.
Second.
Sure. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear? Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move to item 19, which is the resolution supporting the Teamsters workers engaged in a labor dispute with their employer, Flying Food Group, which provides food service to airlines at the San Francisco International Airport. Supervisor Spear, you had pulled this item?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. I support the Teamsters. I support their efforts. I do not think that we should have the line in the resolution that says, "Nor have they been negotiating in good faith." I don't think we know that. So, I would like to strike that particular wording from the resolution.
Where, what clause is that?
This is one, two, three, the fourth clause. Whereas Flying Food Group has not offered economic compensation to adequately meet the expectations of these workers, and then strike, "nor have they been negotiating in good faith", and then, which in turn has prolonged this labor dispute. I don't think we can say that they haven't been acting in good faith. I don't think we have knowledge about that.
All right. Through county council, just, is the language permissible within the resolution?
The language is permissible if, in fact, the board is of the view that they have not been negotiating in good faith. The amendment that's been suggested by Supervisor Spear is also permissible. We can make that change from the dais, if that's the will of the board. But either way, just whatever ultimately is the will of the board as a whole.
So, I would like to make that as an amendment to the resolution.
All right. Before we do that and take up that amendment, can we take public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of public, if you wish to speak on item number 19, please fill out a speaker slip or come forward.
Good morning again. I would like to say, we say they are not bargaining in good faith, because until last week, we had never met face-to-face with the company. We had gone only through their attorney. We would send something, if we had a question on a proposal, we would send it to their attorney. We would wait a week, a week and a half, before we even got a response back. So, this has gone on. We are three years without a contract. Our fight is what all fights are, wages and healthcare. They are trying to give us a healthcare that low-wage workers cannot afford, high deductibles, high premiums. You just said you have to make $109,000 to even be able to be considered, is it low income? Our members are way below that. We are the lowest-paid airline caterer in the business. We are trying to change that. Them not coming and dealing with us, we've never negotiated just an attorney. It's always been an attorney and the company. We had a question, they sent something May 1st. We had a question we asked May 2nd. We didn't get a response until a week and a half later at 5:01 PM, almost like they were intentionally trying to make sure the day was over. We work 24/7 when we're on strike. We worked 24/7 when we're on strike. So I respect what you're saying. This company is not going in good faith. They are not negotiating in good faith. Thank you.
Is there any, are there any virtual comments?
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Madam Clerk, please proceed with verbal comments.
Those on Zoom, please click hand. We're on item number 19 regarding supporting Teamster workers for the San Francisco International Airport food service. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Let me bring it back to the board. Are there any comments? Supervisor Spear. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just want to share that I, through the District Two team and I sent a letter to Flying Food Group back in April in support of the Teamsters workers. I truly believe their demands are reasonable and necessary, fair and affordable healthcare, retro pay that was rightfully earned, a much-needed wage increase that reflects their dedication and the rising cost of living in the Bay Area. And we've been monitoring the situation and believe that the language should stand as is and happy to hear from my colleagues on, on this.
Supervisor Gochet.
No, I understand the, the concerns, but I too believe that the language should stand. I have, my son used to work for this, this union as well, so he's no longer there. But I believe when I've dealt, even from the city's perspective of negotiating, everyone came to the table to negotiate. So I'm full support of the Teamsters.
Any other comments?
You know, let me just say, I'm in full solidarity with the, the language. You know, I had the, the ability, and I've, I've never seen this in my 27 years of, of government. We were literally on the picket line and there was this car that struck not one person, but, but two person. It really had a effect on me. My son was there on a Saturday, but to see these people day in, day out, striking for, for a living wage, and then to see the violence put upon them. And I, I found out that this wasn't just one incident. This happened over a period of, of several weeks. I think it had an impact on all of us, Apollo. I know you were there. It was just, it was totally unacceptable. These drivers, when as we were protesting, they would barrel through and it was just, I mean, it was, it was really appalling. And so I, I think when we talk about living wage, we talk about the cost of living in this county, these aren't the highest paying jobs, respectfully. You know, we need to stand up for people. We need to make sure that their voices, while they're on the picket line, that their voices are heard in a city hall or a county center. This resolution is just so critically important about our values and our values of inclusivity, our values of being able to live in an expensive San Mateo County. And so I'm going to support this resolution as is. And so with that, you know, I will make the motion, a resolution supporting the Teamster workers engaged in a labor dispute with their employer Flying Food Group, which provides food service to airlines at the San Francisco International Airport.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. I'm sorry, through Council, Supervisor Spear had made the original motion, so.
So I guess the motion fails for lack of a second.
Correct.
And I will publicly state that I support the Teamsters in their efforts to negotiate. I do not think this language helps you in your negotiation, so I will oppose the resolution at its present form without the amendment.
Great. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you. Supervisor Spear?
No.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear casting any vote.
All right. It's now time to move on to the regular agenda. We'll start with item six, which is a resolution to approve the rehiring of retired management analysts Mercedes. Six. Yapching to serve as extra help management analyst and certify in pursuit of the section 7522.56 of the California Government Code that the nature of the employment is necessary to fill a critically needed position before the otherwise applicable 180-day separation period expires. Controla Regosa.
Good morning, President Canepa, members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you for this opportunity to ask for your approval to hire Ms. Mercedes Yapching, a management analyst for a critically needed extra help position prior to the expiration of the 180-day post-retirement separation period. Ms. Yapching retired at the end of March after working for our county for 17 years. Her extensive experience and knowledge cannot be easily or quickly replaced. Although our property tax team members are cross-trained, so they can cover for each other, we took the extra step to double fill this position back in January. This was done in anticipation that the individual replacing Ms. Yapching, Ms. Yapching's critical role would need substantial hands-on training to fill the position. Notwithstanding these preparations, Ms. Yapching's assistance will continue to be required on an as-needed basis to ensure adequate knowledge transfer on certain complex calculations and analysis and to help us continue to timely process property tax revenues to our local agencies. I would like to request your approval to hire Ms. Yapching as extra help prior to the expiration of the 180-day post-retirement separation period. Happy to address any questions you may have.
Very straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Regosa. Are there any questions? There any questions? Seeing no questions, no comments? Any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker slips from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
I believe we approve the appointment.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Sure. Let me just double check with Madam Clerk. Any Zoom comments?
Sure. Those on Zoom for item six, please click raise hand to comment. No hands raised.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller? Thank you. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item seven, next item on the agenda is item seven, which is action by this board, acting as the governing board of the area agency on aging for the county to accept the annual report of the Commission on Aging and to adopt a resolution authorizing the 2025-26 area plan update for services, older adults and adults with disabilities to the California Department of Aging and authorizing the execution or transmission letter to accompany the submission. I believe we will hear from San Mateo County Health Chief Colleen Chala and Aging and Disability Service Director Lee Pullen on this item. Lee.
Good, good, good morning. Good morning, President Canepa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Callagie. I'm Lee Pullen, Director of Aging and Disability Services at part of San Mateo County Health. I will be filling in for our health chief, Ms. Chala. I am joined by our Commission on Aging Chair Monica Lee. Indeed, today in your role as governing board of the area agency on aging, we ask for your approval of the annual update to our area plan and to accept the annual report back from our Commission on Aging. We are one of over 600 area agencies on aging throughout the nation, governed by the Federal Older Americans Act, administered by the State of California, with ultimate authority from the federal Health and Human Services Department. Under this department and current administration, we are experiencing significant and unexpected changes to structure, policy, and funding priorities. These have not been favorable, particularly proposed funding reductions. As it is, there is already insufficient funding to meet the needs of our senior constituents, especially those who fall in the economic gap. Income too high for public assistance, but below what's required to make ends meet on a regular basis. This changed federal environment occurs at a time when 25% of our county's population is age 60-plus, the federal definition of older American. Nonetheless, locally, we carry forward with the area plan goals that you all approved last year to advance the quality of life of our constituents. These goals include access to information, promotion of available community services, and doing what we can to support and strengthen the capacity of caregivers in our communities here. Examples of these can be found in the area plan document, and you'll hear more from our commission. Our fourth goal is to address social isolation and loneliness, aligning with one of the board's priorities. As one way of fulfilling this goal, you will find on your consent calendar today a request to approve Measure K funding so that we may launch a community-advised plan aimed at increasing community enrichment opportunities for older adults and persons with disabilities. For now, let's hear from our advisory body, the Commission on Aging Chair Monica Lee.
Good morning, President Canepa, supervisors. The Commission on Aging works closely with Aging and Disability Services carrying out its mission, which is to maintain, enhance, and improve the quality of life for older adults in the county. The commission has two main roles. It is an advisor and an advocate. An advisor to this board and to Aging and Disability Services and an advocate for older adults in the county. These roles are anchored in both federal law and in California law under the Older Americans Act and the Older Californians Act. Information is key to our ability to perform our advisory and advocacy functions effectively. Commissioners need to know about the resources for older adults that are currently available in the county and about the needs of the older adults. We gather this information through contacts with local agencies and providers, interactions with older adults, and educational presentations. Our committees are really the ones that are doing all the work and they're instrumental in gathering all the information we need. In 2024-25, our main overall strategic goal has been successful aging in place. We have three committees that are working very hard on implementing these goals and its many subparts. The Information Resources and Community Engagement Committee, Social Isolation and Transportation, and Aging Readiness and Family Caregiver Support Committee. Committees meet every month, and much has been accomplished during the last year. And I'd just like to highlight two of these accomplishments. Our commissioners attend public events focused on older adults throughout the county, including senior showcases that are organized by the Daily Journal. This is where we have an opportunity to speak with members of the public and with representatives of other organizations that serve older adults and to distribute our Help at Home guide, which is a very popular and useful resource for older adults in the county. We would like to thank Supervisor Canepa for supporting us in this endeavor and making it financially possible for us to participate. We also have established a buddy system where our commissioners are paired with local organizations such as senior centers, city senior commissions, city departments that provide services for older adults. Commissioners maintain regular contact with their local buddies and learn which services are available, how they are delivered, and what works and what does not work so well. In the coming year, we will continue to focus on working with members of the public and local organizations so that we have the information necessary to be effective advisors and advocates for older adults and to carry out our legally mandated obligation to review and approve the area plan, which is before you today. Thank you for much, for your support.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you for all that you do. Do you also work with the Age Friendly Coalition as well? Is that part of the work that you're doing? I know at one point East Palo Alto tried to become, oh, we did become an age-friendly community, and I think more cities need to be age-friendly as well.
Yes, yes, we do. There are nine of our jurisdictions, our municipalities, which are considered age-friendly by AARP and the World Health Organization. And I'm on calendar to talk to our age-friendly, the CAFE, age-friendly excellence soon to see what we can be doing over the summer and the months ahead.
Right. Let me know how I can support.
Well, thank you so much, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I, reviewing the report, I was pleased to see that in terms of health disabilities, it appears that the majority, the vast majority of seniors, about 80% really, are in good health and at least are not, aren't having difficulties ambulating, cognitive decline, and the like. So that's the good news story. The other thing I'd like to promote and hope that the council will consider is what has happened in Foster City. I am so impressed by the Villages program, and the more we can promote that countywide, it would, I think, serve our seniors exceedingly well. And it would be good to have an evaluation as to whether or not we could do that and what it would take financially, because most of the people that provide services to the Villages are doing it as volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support for the Villages. I'm a member of the board of the Villages in San Mateo County. And yeah, we very much like to keep working with supervisors on that.
Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the report and share that I did get the opportunity to go to the senior showcase in collaboration with the Daily Journal, and it was a beautiful event. It included ukulele performance, dance instructors, lots of different tables and information that I wouldn't have even thought that seniors need access to, but they definitely do, and it was very thoughtfully put together. And I did see the Commission on this, on aging there present, and lots of commissioners there as well, connecting with other seniors. And it made me really proud to see our, our county be a part of that event. And it was really fun. I got a dance lesson in. So thank you so much for all of your work and definitely support the, the village in the city of Foster City and do think that it, it's worth replicating in other areas. So thank you.
Supervisor Gochet.
I also wanted to mention that on Saturday, I had an opportunity to moderate a panel at Stanford's Health Matter, and it was on longevity. And it talked about seniors, and it's never too late to exercise, and how the importance of the pace that you walk in helping you to regain and maintain your balance. We would love to get that, that information back. And it is a lot about attitude as well. Your attitude towards health and your ability makes a huge difference. I think they talked about also those who are in, who have to go to services or centers can be reduced, again, by your ability to exercise. They talked about HIIT training, really on, and making sure that the, as we age, we're making sure we're maintaining. So would love to get that information to you.
Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Mueller.
I just want to say how much I appreciate your work. I recently was at the San Carlos Adult Community Center, and there was a pilot that our, our project had funded, where they actually gave seniors a class on, on aging. And they went for a number of weeks, they met every week to learn about all the resources available to them to share amongst themselves what their learnings and wisdoms from, from, from aging. And at the end of it, all of those who had attended said they really wanted to see programs like this countywide. And so I am just so, I'm so grateful for the work that you do and the impact it makes in the public health of our community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just really want to thank you, Monica, your, your leadership and then working. We, we have a pretty, pretty strong commission, and I think that's really good. And I think through your presentation, really addressing those issues, as we know, transportation continues to be a key for those who may not have the ability. You know, people just think, you know, I, I used to serve on the health plan of San Mateo, I no longer do. But in terms of getting people to their medical appointments, but there's a lot more than that, right? So if people want to go and get groceries, or if people want to get things done, I think us really leaning in on the Got Wheels program is great. Lee, thank you for your steady leadership. I'm just really looking forward to these new innovations, these new ideas, and how we're going to advance this forward. And then CAFE is really just sort of, continues to, to grow. And really just, you know, I, we, I had the ability to, to be in Daly City. We met with all the cities to talk about what their localized sort of plans are, transportation, housing, these issues that we're, we're quite familiar with. So I'm very pleased of serving as the liaison and my staff, just how far we've come as a commission in the work in the future that's going to be addressed. And so with that, Mr. Chair, do we have any public comment?
Sure. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Madam Clerk, please proceed.
In Zoom, please click Raise Hand for Item Number Seven, the Annual Report of the Commission, as well as submission of the area plan update. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great, and before we take the item up, I do want staff, I know Colleen's here, I think Supervisor Goshay really brought up a good point about really us looking at potentially working with Stanford. I know Supervisor Corso and I are working on issues around, you know, extending, you know, people's health and, you know, their quality of life and how they live, and so I do think Supervisor Goshay's point, I think we can really learn a lot, and maybe potentially we could incorporate that, so I think that's really critical. Thank you for offering that, Supervisor Goshay. And so with that, do I have a motion? All right, second?
Second.
Okay, second by Spear.
Sure, I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Lee.
Thank you.
That brings us to item eight. This is from Health, which is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Felton Institute for outpatient mental health services and aftercare services for the term of June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Dr. Jay.
Yes, again, the item, good morning. The item for your approval is a three-year contract with Felton Institute. It's actually one of the Bay Area leaders in prevention and recovery services for early-onset psychosis, as well as bipolar disorders. And just a reminder that psychosis usually develops in young adulthood, typically when a person is in their late teens or mid twenties. While it can also affect older people, most people experience what we call the first psychotic episode during adolescence and early adulthood. So Felton's Remind Program offer coordinated specialty care to individuals who are really at high risk for experiencing a psychotic episode, and individuals who are at risk, who have had those episodes within five years. The Bringing Early Awareness and Management, or BIM, program offers early intervention for treatment of bipolar spectrum disorders. And as we know, studies on bipolar disorders indicate that symptoms begin within ages 15 to 25, so really, early intervention is really important. In fiscal year '23 to '24, 95% of the participants have decreased hospitalization days and had inpatient, had less inpatient episodes. Of those who decreased their days in hospitals, the average decrease or shortened days is eight days and one episode in psychosis. So really, the program has helped prevent them from going to the hospital, actually decrease also their time in the hospitals. In terms of socialization success, examples include of the participants include graduation, you know, returning to school, raising their GPA, increased school attendance, and getting a job or volunteering. Felton has partnered with the University of California, San Francisco, to offer evidence-based and culturally competent assessment, diagnosis, and interventions, and we really seen that these programs help our clients manage their conditions in the community and remain and regain tools for their wellness and recovery. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Jay. Do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click Raise Hand for Item Eight, for the Agreement with Felton Institute. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right, can I have a motion on this item?
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor President Corso. Roll call, please, thank you.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, we'll now move to our next regular gen item for this meeting, which is item nine, a resolution authorizing agreement with Mateo Lodge for Residential and Mental Health Treatment Services for the term of June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Dr. Jay.
Hello, Ken. So this agreement is for Mateo Lodge to provide two years of services for residential and mental health services to specifically behavioral health and recovery clients. Mateo Lodge services are low-cost, community-based alternatives for adults with severe mental issues, with co-occurring substance use issues. If not programs like Mateo Lodge, many individuals would be placed in locked psychiatric facilities or homeless shelters. So Mateo Lodge also provides 20-hour support and case management for individuals in their three, in three board and cares, so a total of 33 beds, Wally's, Humboldt, and Kasha House in Redwood City. So the census has been consistently full, and clients stay with the program for many years, and this creates really the needed stability for their, for their part of their wellness and their care. And as you also know, that in California, there's a rapid decline of beds and board and cares across the state. So many of these board and cares are really led by mom and pops, like, you know, small families that have had these programs for generations, and their kids are no longer interested in continuing the, provide the services. They can also sell some of their property at a much higher rate, so it's really important that we keep them. So Mateo Lodge also provides mobile response to about 200 clients, severe, clients with severe mental illness every year, especially the ones that are at risk of homelessness through their family assertive support or FAST team. They also provide in-home outreach and case management to about 70 individuals in the county. In '23-'24, 87% of the clients were not connected to behavioral health, and then 13% had some connection to behavioral health but dropped out or disengaged, and about 60% of those individuals were linked back to behavioral health and recovery services. So again, the goal really is to keep these individuals at a lower level of care and not place them back in locked patients, locked settings, or more expensive settings, and closer to their communities.
Thank you, Dr. Jay. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Mr. President. Dr. Africa, this is a housing program coupled with a mobile service, correct?
Yes.
So there are 33 clients that live at Mateo Lodge?
So there are a total of 33 beds in three different settings, and the mobile support is actually separate from that. So they, if there are, if there are individuals that sort of are seen, that really are needing mobile support, they can be supporting the folks there and their families and their caregivers. So it's not just the clients that they support, actually, it's family members that are grappling also with supporting their, their family members in those facilities.
So what is the length of time that these 33 individuals stay at Mateo Lodge?
I was actually asking that, and some of them have stayed for years because that's the level of care that they need, and some of my colleagues who, I asked that there are some that try to go back to the community and for some reason don't, are not successful, so they, because they have been stable in those settings, and they know the staff, they kind of remain there versus actually have a, what we call a, become unwell. So the length of stay varies for years.
And as to the mobile services, can we ask Mateo Lodge in their mobile service providing to also go to Safe Harbor, for instance, and provide some group therapy there?
They probably will ask for more funding, but we can ask them to provide.
So it's not, it's not an open-ended service?
Yeah.
I mean, do we get a certain number of hours of their mobile services?
24/7 that they sort of do. They have a team that sort of supports that.
So it's not, it's only as needed, I guess? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's not as needed because there are individuals that actually, that we sort of see that are at risk, that they are kind of on call. They're on call like our mobile crisis, but when there are specific things in, with the clients and their families, they go there. So there's a piece that you can call them on call, and there's a piece that some of the providers in the, in Wally's house or Kasha are responding, like, hey, I think you kind of need to support some of these individuals as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll talk to you further on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. As a former GGRC social worker, I got to, I don't think I ever got to visit this facility, but visit similar facilities and actually provide oversight through quarterly inspections and reviews and checking on clients, and so I got to know a lot of small business owners who owned these kinds of homes and facilities, and it is very true, they have a lot of strict licensing requirements, it's hard for them to keep staff, and it's hard for them to stay open, especially when, let's say, you know, they're at retirement age and they're, like you mentioned, Dr. Africa, their kids are not interested in having to deal with the same level of paperwork and licensing and, and just bureaucracy that they have to go to, go through for good reason, but it is challenging, and it does take many, many years to know how to do all of that. So I just wanted to express my support for this item, and I also just want to, although it's not, it's not exactly the same, but you know, we did have the Rainbow Bright incident in our county, and so when there are good facilities, we need to make sure that we support them, because not all of them are what our residents deserve, and we need to make sure we're supporting the ones that we want to see more of, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jay. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click Raise Hand for Item Nine, in Agreement with Mateo Lodge. One hand raised for Dan Stajnik. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I just wanted to bring some financial perspective into this. The National Abuse, Drug Abuse Center says that in 2023, patients were costing us about $56,000 per year, and if I up it by the 13% inflation cost of living since 2023, you come up to about $64,000 a year, and that's roughly in line with the cost per patient for three years, 33 beds of $71,000 here that you're providing. When you first look at it, it seems like a lot of money, but it's probably money well-spent, and these are consistent with what other states pay and what we've been paying historically. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. No further comments, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion? So moved. Second. Roll call, please. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Busy day, Dr. Jay. Next, we have item, 10. Next, we have item 10, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Mental Health Association of San Mateo County for Housing and Housing-related Mental Health Services, Rehabilitation Services, and Flexible Fund Administration, the term of June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Dr. Jay.
So the item is to approve a two-year agreement with MHA, or Mental Health Association, to really provide a wide variety of housing and housing-related mental health and rehabilitation services to approximately 600 individuals across the county. So as you know, MHA provides focus primarily in community-based alternatives who are at risk of acute inpatient psychiatric admissions, those that are, are at risk of being, excuse me, placed in a locked skilled nursing facility or at risk of being homeless. They administer these flexible funds also to purchase necessities for clients like food, clothing, and other basic necessities in the, in the community. So some examples of their program, Emergency Short-Term Shelter at the Spring Street Shelter, Coordination of Shelter Plus Care, the operation of the Friendship Center, which is based in our regional clinics, the Young Adult Independent Living, which pays for rent for transition-age youth while they are working towards their financial self-sufficiency, and supportive housing services for Cedar Street, Waverly, Belmont Apartments, Lightry, et cetera. So for the outcomes, we look at how many people who are in supportive housing remain and prevent being hospitalized. Well, this is important because we know that they are getting the full support that they need to maintain their wellness and recovery. 97% have no, have not had any hospitalization under MHSAs care in the last year, so that's about 223 clients. Another measure we look at is how many clients remain in their level of care or go to a lower level of care. For example, we know we don't want them to go to a locked facility. Not only are they expensive, but they really restrict your freedom, and we saw in our data in '23-'24 that 89% of the clients maintain their level of care or move to a lower level of care under MHSAs programs. So we really see that how affected MHA is.
Are there any questions? Just want to thank the, you know, the Mental Health Association and the, and the providers. They do an incredible job, and like you said, there is really a cost savings in the, you know, in the end of it. I mean, it's the invest, the initial investment so that the acuity doesn't get extremely high and costs more. So with that, do we have any questions, Supervisor Spear?
One question. So is the population that is served through MHA a lower acuity level than Mateo Lodge?
Some, because they have many programs, it's, there are some that are similar and there are some that are not, because MHA is much bigger in terms of the housing supports that they provide, but I would say that there are parts, because of the Kasha House, are probably less more intensive in, in the board and care, a little bit.
All right, thank you.
But they're kind of similar, but less board and care.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click Raise Hand for Item 11, I'm sorry, Item 10, in Agreement with the Mental Health Association. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, that brings us to item 11, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Scott Osterling, MD, Inc., to provide obstetrics and gynecology services for the term of June 1st, 2025 through May 31st, 2028.
Good morning, Supervisors, County Executive, County Attorney. My name is Dr. Youssef Tershani. I'm the Chief Medical Officer at San Mateo Medical Center, happy to present both of these to you. So for this, this one, Dr. Osterling and our obstetric gynecology group provides the full services of prenatal and gynecological care at San Mateo Medical Center, so that includes prenatal care at four of our different sites across the county, including being on-call 24/7 at Stanford, where most of the deliveries occur. I do want to highlight for us, a source of pride is that they have exceptional care. So one indicator of how good prenatal care is, is the C-section rate for the low-risk mothers, and the general Stanford woman population that deliver there have about a 50% higher C-section rate than our group does, and for our patients who have higher risks, have other concerns, the fact that we're able to do that, I think, is a strong indicator of the great prenatal care that is provided there, and happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
Thank you. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Zoom, please click Raise Hand for Item 11, in Agreement with Scott Osterling. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear? Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We come now to item 12, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with the California Advanced Imaging Medical Associates, Inc., to provide radiology services for the term of June 1st, 2025 through May 31st, 2028.
All right, great. So this is our radiology group, and again, as in acute care hospital, we are mandated to have radiology onsite 24/7, and so these, this is our group that offers and reads mammography for breast cancer detection, ultrasound, MRI, CT, X-ray, so both for all our patients in our outpatient settings, as well as our 24/7 operations, both in the ER and the hospital. Of note, KIMA is also the group that offers radiological services at Mills Peninsula, and so our night-on-call folks, when we need to transfer And so our night-on-call folks, when we need to transfer patients, nice to have that coordination between both of them there. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
On Zoom, please click raise hand to comment on item 12, in agreement with California Advanced Imaging Medical Association, or Associates. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear? Mr. President Corzo?
Yes.
Mr. President Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President Gourcay?
Yes.
And President Kanepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
We've now come to our last item from health. Item 13 is a resolution authorize the chief of San Mateo County Health or designated to execute agreements and negotiate amendments for various contracts listed on the Exhibit A to the resolution in the board packet to provide full-service partnership services for the term of June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Dr. Africa?
Hopefully, this will end with a bang. So we're combining actually these three agreements on what we call an umbrella contract in order to streamline the approval process for the CEO, the board, our health chief, for all these contract agencies. And it also will allow us to move the slots around with these three providers. So negotiations with our FSP providers, Telecare, Caminar, and Edgewood took longer than usual because of the CalAim changes that we needed to implement. And also, we were looking at new factors because we needed to analyze billable and non-billable services, but also agreeing on the slots that each of the providers will continue to oversee. So FSP services are the cornerstone of the Mental Health Services Act. They, you know, they provide services in housing, employment, education, specifically also providing services or what we call co-occurring services. So currently, we have 350 slots for adults and older adults, and then also about 120 slots for youth, children, and transition-age youth. And just to show you how effective they are, individuals that were part of our program saw a 72% reduction in hospitalization for those that in adults and 45% in older adults. And we also see, saw a 56 decrease in PES or psychiatric emergency visits for adults and 38 less than in older adults. Clients report that there's a reduction in arrests for being part of the program, about 80% of that, and also a reduction in homelessness. So we are currently at 75% capacity with our adult FSPs and then also 80% capacity with our youth slots. And as you know, there had been some challenges and difficulties with some of our providers, and that's why we're really working them to increase more of the bed space. So happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. J. Are there any comments from the board members? Yes. Supervisor Mueller?
Go first. These three items today is over $80 million, plus the ones we did earlier this year. I'm recalling what Louise Rogers said to me before she left. She said that our behavioral health costs are exceeding our hospital costs now in San Mateo County. So I would really recommend and ask that this be considered as a study session in August where we can spend an afternoon really delving into these issue areas to see where our potential risks are and potential cost increases and how we can reduce the costs and still provide quality service.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, I would join in that. And I, at the Health Plan of San Mateo, during a retreat, we were fortunate enough to have a gentleman with us from the state. And I, you recall, I confronted him on the subject of what's happening right now in our county with respect to health plan services. And he seemed befuddled by it. And so I actually would like to invite him here as well to be with us for that study session. We have to get to the bottom of what's happening here because there seems to be a disconnect in Sacramento in terms, and then what's happening here on the ground. And so when we have that, I want to bring the external stakeholders here so we can have that conversation with them and see what the heck is missing.
And also look at best practices in other counties in the state or around the country.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I do think that's a worthy conversation, but it definitely needs to be grounded in the realities of not just what's happening in Sacramento, but what's going to be coming down from the federal level in terms of funding cuts and Medicaid changes. I was at a retreat with the California Latino Caucus, wait, Latino Caucus of California Counties this weekend, and we received a presentation from a doctor at the California Medical Association. And there are definitely concerns that that association has flagged around funding. And so I do think it's really important that we be mindful of that. I think it has a lot of potential to impact our medical center. But we're also one of the few counties in the state, I think there's only seven now, that have county-owned hospitals. And so we are different than other counties and BHRS services, while, you know, the cost may be concerning also. I think those are necessary services. They're not services that, I would say, our county is unique in that we probably have less, not less services, but less partners to help provide those services because of how expensive it is to live here. And so I think the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Association vendor associate.
The Contractors Association.
The Contractors Association also has a perspective on, you know, they're the ones that get contracts through BHRS. And so I think their perspective is also important to have at the table. So we get the full picture, really. But I will send the presentation from the California Medical Association to our county executive to share with all of us so that we can have that context available. Thank you.
You know, I just have a clarifying question for Supervisor Spear. Can you, I want to understand the, in August, what we're trying to accomplish? And that would really just sort of level set for me, you know, just sort of, just what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, we see these projects or programs come to us piecemeal from time to time. This would give us an opportunity to spend, you know, two or three hours discussing the mental health programs in San Mateo County, what, how we could potentially improve them, create cost effectiveness. I mean, it's part of our oversight responsibility, which, you know, I hate to bring this up, but when I was a supervisor before, we did that. We would have study sessions where we would take, you know, certain specific areas within county government, and we would do a deep dive. And I think that would behoove us, particularly since, as our former director of health had indicated, was concerning to her. And I think we should take that concern and really reflect upon it.
Yeah, no, and I'm not opposed to the idea. You know, when I look at local government, you know, I've served on the city council, we've had, you know, a county manager, county executive, we have department heads. I've been on this board for about eight years. I have a lot of trust with our county executive and our department heads. One of the things I get concerned about is really getting into the nitty-gritty of micromanaging. I'm not suggesting we're going to do that, but I just, I think as an organization, we have over 5,400 people. You know, we act as a board of supervisors, we act as a board of directors, right? We set the vision and the policies. What I get concerned about is as we move forward, and in this case, is that we then micromanage these departments. And I'm not interested in doing that. You know, finally, let me just say this. I think when it comes to, you know, if we move forward with this study session, I think it's really important that, you know, the providers are there, the people who are doing the work. And I'm going to ask you to do that because this work is really intensive, intensive work. For some people, just waking up because of their acuity is a success, right, sometimes? Or just going to the store. And sometimes, you know, we don't understand it, just these levels of acuity, there's different ranges. And so, you know, I don't know where the board is landing on this, but, you know, I'm fine with the subcommittee. But in terms of us just sort of micromanaging departments moving forward, I don't know if I'm interested in that. I'm not suggesting that's the case. So, okay. I'm glad. Makes me feel better.
Through the chair, if I could also. I don't think it's a bad thing to do an overview of all that's being spent. We are in the position to do that, not telling you what to do, but just to understand all of the cost, because it's still taxpayers' dollar at the end of the day. And we want to make sure that, there could be overlap or whatever, but it'd be good to bring it all in a study session. Thank you.
All right. So I think we've got direction on the study session. Does anyone want to move the resolution? And have we taken public comments, Sukie?
We have, yes.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Second. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. President Corzo?
Yes.
Mr. President Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President Gourcay?
Yes.
And President Kanepa?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Good work, Dr. J. Item 14 comes from Parks, adopt a resolution authorize the president of the board of supervisors to execute an agreement with Jensen Landscape Contractor LLC. Nicholas Calderon, good afternoon, good morning, sir.
President Kanepa, good morning. I want to make sure I get that right this time. I think Sukie has the brief. Perfect. Honorable President Kanepa, honorable board members, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez, my name is Nicholas Calderon, and I am the director of the San Mateo County Parks Department. Today, I'm very excited to present to you a proposed agreement with Jensen Landscape Contractors for design-build services for the new Flood Park Playground. The realized Flood Park project started in 2014 when the department determined that a comprehensive overhaul of the park was warranted because its facilities and amenities were antiquated. And now, in under three weeks, on June 7th, we will be opening Phase 1 to the public, which we are very excited about. And Phase 2 of the project is the playground that I'll be discussing today. In February 2024, the department commenced an extensive public design process to understand what play experiences and features the public most desired at the new Flood Park Playground. By partnering with organizations like CASA CircoLO, the Sheriff's Activity League, CHORON, and local libraries, we were able to hear from residents from Menlo Park, North Fair Oaks, and beyond. There was a strong preference to have a playground that complemented the natural environment of Flood Park, including by preserving trees and using earth tones and plantings to create a more green setting. And participants favored structured play that was challenging but also inclusive. A zip line, swings, slides, and climbing features were among the most desired elements. And with using this information, the department developed three concepts that we then presented to the public for consideration. And using a survey, the public overwhelmingly selected an alternative called Boulder Canyon. Boulder Canyon, or as we now refer to it as just the Flood Park Playground, really combines the best of all worlds. We have modern play elements surrounded by trees and native shrubs. We have inclusive play features. We have elements that will test kids looking for a challenge. And we have features that you can slide down, spin on, climb over, zip on, and we also have a totlot for our littlest visitors. We have worked very closely with kids, parents, and playground designers to make sure that we have something for everyone at this playground and to make sure that we are able to serve the broadest range of ages and abilities. The main feature of the playground is a double tower connected by a bridge. On the left-hand side of this image, you can see the first tower, which includes a spiraled net on the inside that can be walked up, crawled up, scooted up, in order to access the slide as well as the bridge to the second tower. This feature, which we actually custom-designed for this playground, improves the inclusiveness of our overall playground. And it allows people of varying ages and abilities to scale the inside of the tower and have access to the slide in a fun and exciting way. Another great aspect, so the aspect of the tower, is that there's a bridge that provides entry to the mid-level, and you can see that highlighted in the red box there. This allows people to use a meandering path that complies with accessible building code standards to enter at the mid-level of the tower instead of using that internal spiral. This has several added benefits. First, individuals in wheelchairs are able to have greater access to the interior of the tower and have a short distance to traverse before accessing the slide. Second, the meandering path serves as its own play element, as I'll show shortly. And then lastly, the embankment of the path also serves as a wonderful play environment, as you can see here. This shows the profile of the path and its embankment. And to add functionality, we've added slides, but also the slope gets used for creative play by kids. If you've seen a playground like this, they like to climb up it, roll down it, slide down it on a cardboard, kind of whatever they can create in their mind is how they use it.
Skateboard.
We'll have to wait and see if that happens, but unfortunately, knowing my son, that will eventually happen. But whatever they can create in their mind, they're able to use it for. This is the second tower, and this is a large net climber. One observation I've made, both by talking with parents and by visiting countless playgrounds, is that kids age out of playgrounds at a much younger age these days, and it's because there's not enough challenging them. We didn't want that to happen at Flood Park, especially given the investment that the county's made. And so this net climber is really an element that we've added to make sure that that doesn't happen. And this is a feature that you're able to climb on the inside of, you can access the slide, you can then access that bridge. But ultimately, this is a more challenging feature that will make sure that kids, as they get older and get more advanced, they're able to still come back and enjoy this playground. Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to post signage to indicate that certain activities are better for older children, so we don't have a three- or four-year-old trying to do this?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be signs that specify kind of the age that it's designed for, that two-to-five and five-to-12 age range. Now, is it really a playground if you don't have swings? I don't think it is. So we, in order to make sure we're providing a lot of different play experiences, we've included three types of swings at this playground. On the left, you see the conventional type of swings that most everyone is familiar with. In the middle is a bucket swing. And so this is a swing where, say, individuals who may not be able to swing on their own or they may need some extra assistance, they can sit in that and a harness comes down and secures them in. And so now they are safely in the swing and they're able to enjoy that and have fun on the swings. And the last on the far right is called a friendship swing. To give a better understanding of what that looks like, it's like this. And this is a swing where kids can swing with their friends, parents can swing with their kids, you can hold a child while swinging on it. They have one of these in a Burlingame Park, and I will tell you, there's always a line for it, and the loudest laughs are always coming from the kids playing on this swing. There's just something special about being able to swing with your child or swing with your friend. I will tell you, my wife regularly does it with the kids. I'm usually on the outside pushing, but they love it. And again, there's always a line. And so we knew we had to offer this as an option, and this was highly desired by the public. I'm sorry? So I think to do two would change, we would likely end up having to change a lot. But I will say, if this is as big of a hit as I know it's going to be, we will actually start looking at incorporating this into more of our playgrounds. But I think that's a really good question and something that we can consider as we go through the detailed design process, certainly Supervisor. This is a 55-foot-long zip line bay. It's a two-bay zip line, and on the left is a rope swing style where a child can jump and propel themselves down as they hold and they sit on it. And on the right-hand side, we will have a bucket seat similar to the swing where a child or an individual can sit in it and someone can push them down, and they'll travel down and they come back. I first experienced this when I was in Arizona visiting some friends and knew we had to offer this as an option for public consideration. And to make sure it was safe, I put my two-year-old son in it, I sent him down, and as soon as he came back, he got out and he ran to the back of the line because he wanted to do it again. I sent him down, and as soon as he came back, he got out and he ran to the back of the line because he wanted to do it again. This was also, it's important to note, the most preferred feature out of everything we surveyed the public on. This received the most votes out of anything else in the playground. And this will be our first one in the system and the first one I will know of in the county as a whole. And we're very excited to be providing this.
Nick, can I ask a question on this? Because it reminds me of, there's a feature at California Adventure, Disneyland, the California Adventure, where kids can do this. But on the bottom, it's a very spongy surface, so that if kids fall off, they're not injuring themselves. So are we thinking about that as well?
Through the chair, Supervisor, yeah. So, great question. I'm really glad you asked that. So the entire playground will be a spongy rubber. We call it poured-in-place, but it's a sponge-like rubber surfacing that has a lot of give to it. And we've made the, you know, the plan is to make the entire playground that for two reasons. One is from a safety perspective, you know, the kids tend to get hurt less as they land on that. The other is it's more accessible. So when you have playgrounds using, say, the mulch or the tan bark, that's not wheelchair-friendly. Anyone who has accessibility issues has trouble with that. But the poured-in-place is that it's firm enough to support different mobility needs, but it's spongy enough to cushion against a fall.
Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. And these are the spinning features that we will incorporate. Very technical name for some of these playground equipment, but we have two types. The first on the left is one where individuals can sit, stand, or if you're in a wheelchair, you can enter the platform and lock, and you can participate in the spinning. And on the right is more of a cone shape that you can climb on, but you can also sit on the platform. And if you do have accessibility needs, you are able to transfer onto that platform and participate in that as well. And so we have some of these in our feature, in our system right now. Hugely popular there in many of the playgrounds in the area. So we know that these are very popular. They're accessible, and we're very excited to be offering those. And then lastly, for... There we go. Lastly, for our littlest visitors who are not yet ready to tackle some of these other features, we have a tot lot that will have features that our youngest visitors can climb on. They can work on their balance. They can slide down. Now, we had a little bit of limitation on the software used for these. These will actually be the toddler bucket seats that you're used to seeing. They show the conventional swings there, but these will, in fact, be the toddler buckets that you're most used to seeing at the youngest playgrounds made for youngest kids. Now, the department elected to use the design-build-delivery method for this project. And in February this year, the department released a request for qualifications for design-build entities, to which two firms responded. Both firms were determined to be qualified and, in accordance with Public Contract Code, were issued the request for proposals. In April, Jensen Landscape Contractors submitted their proposal, which the department determined to be responsive and which satisfied the department's criteria for design and construction of this project. And we did a deep-dive analysis into the proposal. We're very familiar with the firm, and we're very confident that the public is getting the best value on this contract and that the firm is very much capable of delivering the project before us. So as shown, if the board were to approve the agreement today, we would issue a notice to proceed this month. Construction would commence in July, and all of us would be sliding down slides and zipping down zip lines in March of 2026. And so this is the recommendation before the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Gochet.
Nick, thank you so much. This is so exciting. At the park, there's been so much work going on at the park, and I am excited for this to come online and to see everyone from the county come down to Flood Park and utilize this new park. One question for me, what are the contingency plans if construction costs increase due to tariffs?
Through the chair, Supervisor, phenomenal question. We have already identified the features that we want incorporated and have worked through the tariff issue with the vendors. And so the tariffs for features coming from overseas will not be added to our overall cost. We have that in writing from the vendors, and the rest of them will be coming from here within the United States.
Right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, so I didn't want today to go by without looking back in history. So I really, back in 2011, the county was looking at closing this park, and it offered to sell it to the city of Menlo Park for a dollar. And I remember going to those meetings, and in 2012, when I became a city council member, because the city said no.
Right.
They weren't going to buy it for a dollar, if you can believe that. And I wasn't on council at the time, and I thought it was crazy. So I get in council in 2012, and I want to revisit the decision. And there was a group that formed in 2011 called Save Menlo Park, I mean, Save Flood Park, excuse me, Save Flood Park. And they worked tirelessly, working very hard, and were very, they were very upset when it sold. But then in 2012, I got on the council, and I said, I want to revisit it, and I got a call from Jill Olson, and I want to call her out today because she said, Ray, we've changed our mind. Warren Slocum has been elected to the Board of Supervisors, and we think he's going to make improvements to this park that we're going, that's going to change the trajectory of this park. And I want to give a shout-out to Jill and Warren today and your hard work, Nicholas, over all these years, working with the community of Menlo Park, to make this, to really just make this such a shining day. To see these plans come to fruition and to know where it was back then, it's just, I can't, it's just indescribable. And this park, I remember back in 2011, and we talked about how important this park was to the SAL program. See the investment we're making in that for the community. This is a main park for so many members of our community to come celebrate concierres and birthday parties and just, I just can't express enough thanks to you today.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you for all of the hard work that Supervisor Mueller just described. And I'm really excited to see this move forward and to be able to vote on this today. And I can't wait to see how you take everything you've learned and apply it to the Coyote Point Park update. So looking forward to that. I know you're working on that already. But, you know, these parks have, some of them are just not safe anymore, right? They haven't received investments. And right now, we need more safe spaces for our community, more places to really be out in nature, and kids need to play. We need to get them off devices. And this is a way that we can invest in not just a park, but the mental health of our future generations. So thank you. And I also love how inclusive it is. It is, I would say, similar to what we see in other counties, nearby cities. And there's a lot of families that will go very far just to be at this park because they don't have an inclusive, accessible playground closer to them. But now they will. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you. You know, in my many years in public service, what taxpayers want more than anything is access to their national parks, their state parks, their county parks, their city parks. I mean, it's one way for us to show that we really are interested in making sure that there's recreational activities for our communities. Having said that, I'm trying to think of a north county park that's in the county domain that has something similar to this.
Supervisor.
And if there isn't.
There is no county park that has anything like what we're doing here. This is the first.
Okay. So once again, I just want to draw attention to the fact that the north part of the county sometimes gets overlooked. And I hope that moving forward, you will look at a way that we might be able to do that in the northern part of the county.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so, so much, Nicholas. And, you know, I'm grateful for Measure K. And many you recall, in the city of Daly City, we have Geller Park, and we were able to create a partnership years ago about, I think, total park cost about maybe $1.8 million. I think the county contributed about $1.2 million. The park is very similar, has the little tower going up, and it's an amazing space. We actually have the tandems, which is great. So let me just thank you for your work. I think the design of the park is pretty unique and it's special. And I think, you know, I think Supervisor Gochet hit the nail right on the head. I think it's just not a park for people in that area. I think it's a park where people will come from, whether Santa Clara County, Daly City. I think it's, I mean, I think it's really going to be a special place that we can all be proud of. I want to thank your staff, want to thank legal counsel in the back there for really putting this together. I'm excited. I'm really excited. I think this is, how many years have we been working on this, Nicholas?
About a decade.
About a decade. And so it's good to see it come to fruition. You and your team should be extraordinarily proud. I think it's a great project. And so with that, we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item 14, for the Flood Park Playground. Two hands raised. Sid Young, followed by Dan Stejink. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Sherri. I'm just curious, Nicholas, how much total you've spent on Flood Park in the past 10 years? I know I used to attend the Parks Board meetings, and every time I saw you go over the budget for Flood Park, they were always increasing it. I would just like to point out what Jackie Spear pointed out, that there isn't the same amount of equity in the rest of the county as far as features for parks. And that's definitely true on the mid-coast. It seems to me that besides the Don Horsley Park at Tunis Creek, which is built from scratch, our local parks where kids can play, not tourist attractions that you have to drive to. Those parks aren't really getting the same amount of equity. And when you took the money from the parks mitigation fee for the pump track, you actually raised more money than you spent. So I'm just, hopefully, in the future, Ray Mueller will get as much money for the mid-coast as Warren Slocum did for Flood Park. And if you'd like to answer me how much you've spent on it, that might be helpful to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sid. There are two more hands raised. And just a reminder that the public comment is not a Q and A period, though we do welcome all questions and comments that you do have.
Madam Clerk, you're unmute.
Oh, apologies. I was just mentioning, thank you, Sid. And just a reminder that public comment is not a Q and A period, though the board does welcome hearing all of your questions and thoughts and comments that you do have during this time. We do have two other speakers, Dan Stejink, followed by Laurel Miranda. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. My name is Dan Stejink from Pacifica. On this specific issue, I'd like to agree with Sid Young here that we frequently feel like we're ignored up here on the coast completely, and we don't get our fair share. I'd also like to thank President Canepa for his very apt statement that Supervisor Gochet hit it right on the head. And it's so rare, 20 years attending these meetings, one of the three most attended public members here, so rare that we hear someone say what the taxpayers want. And thank you to former Congresswoman Jackie Spear, who also said something very similar in the same item. So it's rare. We really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Laurel Miranda, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name's Laurel Miranda, and I just want to thank Nicholas Calderon and the Board of Supervisors for all that you've done to support people of all abilities and particularly welcoming people with disabilities to Flood Park and in the design of the playground. I think it's important that we welcome everybody to our recreation areas and everyone feel included. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done towards that and continued work in the future, whether it's at Flood Park or at other parks throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. No further comments, Mr. President.
All right. Supervisor Gochet?
That we approved the resolution for the Flood Park landscape. I know I'm not saying all the language right now, but Nicholas, you know what I mean. We'd like to see this program move forward.
All right. A roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And President Canepa. Thank you. Motion passed.
All right. That brings us to item 15, to adopt introduction of an ordinance, amending Chapter 5.158 of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code to clarify and strengthen minimum wage enforcement procedures by authorizing the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement. This is brought to us by Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Spear.
Okay. So the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement has been a needed resource in San Mateo County. Through the O L S C, we seek to assist workers in finding a remedy for unpaid wages kept by an employer and support businesses in achieving compliance with wage and hour regulations. The Office of Labor Standards Enforcement will also work to make sure minimum wage laws are being followed. To carry out the work of the O L S C, you have this ordinance presented to you. The ordinance being presented today will play a vital role in ensuring that minimum wage laws are properly enforced across unincorporated San Mateo County. By promoting fair labor practices, it will help protect workers while fostering a level playing field for responsible employers. I'm going to go ahead and ask Supervisor Spear to go and share a few comments.
Thank you. I join with my colleague Supervisor Mueller in bringing this to the board. I was applauding the fact that last year, the board created the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement. What it needs now are the teeth to truly enforce the law. And considering that we are the most expensive, one of the most expensive places in the nation in which to live, and we have minimum wage workers who are, from time to time, being exploited, we need to make sure that those few employers who aren't playing by the rules are slapped hard. And so this is actually not as big a slap as I would like. But for those that don't play by the rules, we are going to start fining them. And as you see in the analysis, the fines are there to discourage that kind of conduct. You may recall recently, there was a marijuana grower on the coast who was not paying its workers. And those workers actually contacted the Council General's Office for Mexico in San Francisco to complain. And but for the fact that they did that, we wouldn't even know about the fact that that particular grower was not paying them. So this is going to hopefully encourage everyone to play by the rules.
Thank you. I want to express my sincere gratitude to all the teams that have collaborated with our offices to bring this vision to life. I want to thank County Executive Mike Calady for your support. And for my colleagues, I also want to note all the individuals who worked on it to give you peace of mind. I want to thank County Attorney John Niblin, Chief Deputy County Attorney Daniel Vilim, County Attorney Brian Coolidge, Deputy County Attorney Carolyn Babbage, for helping establish a structured and effective enforcement framework. I also want to recognize District Attorney Steve Wagstaff, Kyle Cakebrand in the Wage Prevention, Wage Theft Prevention Team, and obviously Supervisor Spear for her valuable work on this. And the Office of Equity, Shereen Malakafazi and Shane Ross. And Shereen, did you, I believe you have a presentation for us? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Shereen Malakafazi-Taidi, she/her pronouns, Chief Equity Officer. And I'm joined here with a couple of the colleagues who will be presenting with me today. We're with Carolina Babbage, who is the Deputy County Attorney. She'll be presenting a portion of this with me. And then Shane Crary-Ross, and she's here to answer any questions that you also have. She's a new Labor Standards Manager in the County Executive's Office. We also have Kyle Cakebread, who Supervisor Mueller made mention of as a key partner in the District Attorney's Office under Steve Wagstaff. And we have one more person joining us, Michelle Flores, in early June to support additional outreach and engagement efforts, which we'll speak a little bit more with you about. So we are all here today and acknowledging this because this is the first actual board item that the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement is bringing to you today. that the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement is bringing to you today in partnership with the Board of Supervisors. If you go to the next slide, just sort of as a reminder, the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement is, oh, it's my slides. Okay. Is a collaborative partnership between the County Executive's Office, the Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, bringing the strengths of each of those offices to bear on this new function for the county. The vision and universal goals of the Office of Labor Standards really are that all workers are paid a fair wage and treated respectfully, and lawful employers are not undercut by competitors who are paying, not paying legal wages. The core functions for this office, across all of our functions, we're going to be making sure that we maintain confidentiality to the degree possible. We want to create systems that maximize safety for vulnerable workers and employers. So no immigration information will be asked, and all of our abilities to maintain confidentiality, we will put at play. The core functions across the office will be around policy and strategy development, of which this is what we're here in front of you for. Advice, providing a confidential labor advice hotline staffed by nonprofit attorneys in multiple languages to be able to support, answer questions, make referrals, as well as file with other relevant government agencies when we are not the right agency to file with. Investigations and enforcement, which is the focus of what you're going to be hearing more about today. And then education and outreach, which is a huge part of what we do. Really, while you're going to hear more about the enforcement authority and procedures today, that's what's in front of you. Really, the aim of the office is to prevent wage theft by creating a culture of awareness and compliance, and we're really spending a lot of time thinking about that. What the current minimum wage ordinance says, Chapter 5.158, which was adopted in 2022, established a minimum wage in the unincorporated areas of San Mateo County with an annual increase, and currently it stands at $17.46. What the enforcement mechanisms written into the existing ordinance relate to the ability for an aggrieved employee to file a complaint with the State Labor Commissioner or to file a private lawsuit. What we propose in this ordinance, the amendment to this ordinance, is to, one, integrate the authority for enforcement by the O L S C, to allow the O L S C to investigate suspected violations, and to make determinations, and to take action to enforce those determinations. Then, the second part of the amendments include a set of transparent enforcement procedures, which include how the investigations will go, the damages and penalties, and also the employer's due process. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy County Attorney Carolina Babbage to describe the details for you.
Mr. President, before Carolina speaks, I was hoping I'd just say a few words about Carolina, who's joined us, maybe it's about six months ago. I mean, we were looking with Shereen to really, you know, sort of beef up our ability to be active in this space, particularly with respect to wage enforcement and matters like that. And we were really fortunate to find Carolina, who was working for Legal Aid up in Marin County, and she's got some deep experience in this area. She's been educated in the law, both in Mexico and the United States. And she brings, again, a lot of experience in this area, and she's worked very, very hard over the course of the last six months with Shereen and with colleagues in the office. So we're just very pleased that she's a part of our team, and this is her first opportunity, I think, to speak with you all, at least collectively. So I wanted to say at least a few words about her.
Thank you, John, and good morning, members of the board. As John say, my name is Carolina Babbage, and I am the deputy county that has been assigned to work directly with the Office of Labor Standards and Enforcement. The bulk of the work that I've been doing in these months, it's been in reviewing the enforcement mechanisms and penalties that other jurisdictions in the state have for the enforcement of their local ordinances. As I walk you through the slides, you are going to see some of the result of my research that has been incorporated in the proposed amendment to the ordinance. We borrow, in large part, the language that other jurisdictions are using for the enforcement of their local ordinances and penalizations. So with that, I'm going to start to explain to you how the investigation and determination process will be for the O L S C office. The O L S C might initiate the investigations of minimum wage violations through complaints received through the advice line or direct referrals. We can also initiate the investigations from direct engagement at the outreaches that the O L S C will be conducting. To the extent possible, we will maintain the confidentiality of the claimants to the extent that the law provides that we can keep their confidentiality. We can foresee cases where this might be difficult, but to the extent the law allows us to do so, we will keep the confidentiality. So the complaints might be filed in person, by email, or by phone through the advice line. Once the O L S C initiates the investigation, the employer will be notified through a warning notice of violation. The employer will have the opportunity to cure the violation and to work with the O L S C through the investigation. At this point, the employer will have the opportunity to provide all the information that either prove or disprove that a violation has been committed. The O L S C, once the employer provides the information required, the O L S C will determine whether or not a violation occurred. It could be the case that the employer chooses to ignore the warning notice of violation, and then the O L S C will issue a formal administrative citation that will include all the penalties that are due at that time. Once the O L S C informs the employer of the determination, it will inform the employer of the right they have to appeal the resolution of the O L S C, and the steps that they can follow to appeal such determination. At this point, if there is no compliance from the employer, the O L S C will have, will be authorized to either follow the steps provided in the ordinance through the investigation, determination, and appeal, or to file a civil action directly on the name of the employer. Apologies, it's the other way. Okay. So the rationale for the monetary damages and penalties. The rationale for the penalties is both. Employee-focused and county system-focused. At the employee level, we recognize that there are various forms provided for in here for the relief of the violations. I really focus on acknowledging that there are significant harms that flow to the employers who work at this income level when they are not paid for the wages they are entitled to. And I will talk a little bit more of the details in the following slides. With respect to the county, we think that it's important that we have a system in place that incentivizes employers to pay lawful wages, and that we have mechanisms in the ordinance that help offset the cost of the enforcement, such as the issuing of citations, assessing fees, and providing for attorneys' fees and costs. The details for the penalties are as follows. And one thing I want to point out is that the penalties in the chart are consistent with what we've seen in other counties and cities throughout the state that we believe that have well-functioning offices of labor enforcement. We are consistent with the penalties that they use. So to the employees, the ordinance provides for payment of back wages, and it also provides for payment of interest on all due and unpaid wages at the rate of interest specified in California Civil Code from the day the wages were due to the day the wages are paid in full. In addition to that, the ordinance provides for a penalty of $50 to each affected employee for each day the violation occur or continue. Regarding the county, the ordinance provides for payment of a maximum of $50 for each day the violation occur or continue. And this fee is aimed to offset the cost of enforcement. Additional civil penalties in the amounts set forth in the chart will be included to enforce this ordinance. If the employer or the O L S C are forced to bring a civil action to enforce this ordinance, the ordinance provides that if they propel, they shall be entitled to the worry of reasonable attorney costs and fees. The employer will have the ability to appeal the resolution of the O L S C if they are in disagreement with the determination of the office. They will file in writing the specific, they will file in writing the appeal specifying the basis for the challenge. A neutral hearing officer will be appointed by the County Executive Office. The burden of proof will be on the O L S C. Both parties will have the opportunity to submit written evidence and identify any witnesses. After the hearing, the officer will issue a written decision, which is considered, which will be considered final for administrative process. The legal standard is preponderance of evidence, and the county will pay for the hearing officer. At this point, we're considering whether the hearing officer will be, choose from a pool of candidates that will be attorneys with five years of experience, or it might be the case that it will be an attorney already working for the county. We are reviewing which possibility we will go with. If the employer disagrees with the determination of the hearing officer, it will have the opportunity to go to a judicial review with the Superior Court. The employer might file the appeal, and the court will conduct a new hearing. If the court rules in favor of the employer, the county will reimburse the filing fee and refund any penalties that we previously deposited in accordance with the court judgment. The county attorney will represent the county at this instance. If the court judgment is in favor of the county, we will enforce the judgment. Once the judgment is final, then we will file a civil action to the enforcement. We will, we might ask for a rate of execution. And at this point, because we're going to have a lot of the information from the employer, it might be that we decide to levy their bank accounts or other properties. And that's it from my part.
Great, Supervisor Mueller?
So I don't have anything more, but there was one person who I didn't thank before we opened up for questions. Dr. Escalar, could you stand up? So I just want you all to please recognize Dr. Escalar, Marisol from my office. So the day I hired her, we talked about what we were going to do, and I gave, and the one, I told her this was the policy thing she needed to deliver on, and we would not be out here without, without all of her hard work over these last few years. So I did that, so that's one of the reasons why. So with that, we can go and open up for questions.
Any questions? Public comment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item number 15 in ordinance for the minimum wage enforcement. We have two hands raised, Julie Lind, followed by Dan Stejink. Julie, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. Good morning, President Canepa, supervisors and staff. I'm Julie Lind with the San Mateo Labor Council, and I'm here to speak in strong support of this ordinance. Thank you to Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Spear for bringing it forward, and Shereen and her team for all the work as well. Our labor laws are only as good as our ability to enforce them. A minimum wage means nothing if workers are still being underpaid. That's why the creation, now the integration of the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement is so critical. This office gives real teeth to our values, ensuring that wage theft is investigated, violations are penalized, and employers are held accountable. Strong enforcement isn't just about protecting workers. It's about protecting honest businesses, promoting fair competition, and upholding the integrity of our local economy. With the passage of Baby 594, we have even more tools to act, and our county is showing leadership by using them. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Dan Stejink, please unmute and begin.
Thanks. Yeah, it looks like we're going to be paying about 90 cents more, 96 cents more an hour in 2025 than the state of California. I'm curious if we're reinventing the wheel here. The state enforces all minimum wage labor violations, and they've got kind of a well-traveled process for doing it. I'm curious if it wouldn't be more efficient and more legally protectable if we kind of based a process on what the state has already done? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. No further comments, Mr. President.
Great, we'll bring this side to back, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes, I rarely respond to public comments, but that one's just plain wrong. And Shereen, if you could come to the mic. So when we, when we first started to look at the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement, one of the things that, and Shereen, I remember you did the research, we went and we looked at how many unenforced actions were brought that this, that how, just the millions of dollars sitting there for people who had actually gone through a very long and lengthy state process, and then were left with no way to enforce the action. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. The state, it is a well-worn path that the State Labor Commissioner has, but they are, one, incredibly overwhelmed by the number of complaints and being able to be responsive to them in a timely matter. One of the challenges that we heard about was that it can take two to four years sometimes to resolve an issue, and especially for low-wage workers, that is just not a timeframe that they can withstand for what they, they need their wages for day-to-day bills. And so in order to, for us to be responsive to that and to make sure that we could step in as a local entity to make our minimum wage a reality, it required us to have local enforcement. Though we do anticipate certainly a strong partnership with the State Labor Commissioner. The State Labor Commissioner is also, enforces the entire labor code, of which we're going to be taking a small portion of consideration based on our minimum wage. And we do see- And we do see that, unfortunately, many millions of dollars of the judgments that the, that workers withstood the, the length of time to get the judgment that they were owed a certain amount of money, sometimes in the thousands, over, and a few in the millions. And what we saw, unfortunately, was that there were still outstanding unpaid judgments many years back. So we really, while we see the state as someone we can learn from, we also want to make sure that we're well-positioned to support strong enforcement locally.
Thank you. I pass it back to you, President Canepa.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I wanted to ask, maybe I, I didn't necessarily see it in the slides, or maybe I missed it, but will we be fining employers who fail to pay their employees a minimum wage? Yes, that was a 500.
There is a set of different kind of fines also. We're including interest and back, so back pay, interest on that back pay, the $50 a day per employee, and then the separate citations based on the violations that we've identified and that's included in the ordinance, but also lifted up in the memo.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then what about employers who steal tips? How would that be captured, or is it already captured?
So if through the investigation, we find that there are other violations, we are going to enforce this ordinance. There are some limits to what, as an office, as an OLC will be able to do, but as someone in the, from the public mentioned, currently, the, the local prosecutors will, will have, have the ability to prosecute violations of the labor, of the state labor code. If we find it through the investigation that the case merits, that the local prosecutor, in this case, the county attorney gets involved, we will file for all the violations that we encounter.
Thank you. And let's see. Can you help me understand how we'll be, I know you talked a little bit about outreach, but can you revisit that a bit and just talk about how we'll be outreach-ing to folks? Let's say, you know, you talked about confidentiality early, earlier, and that's really important, especially when workers have very real reasons to fear retaliation, the loss of their jobs, their only income. And, you know, when there's just one nanny, or just one person in the kitchen, or just one person at the front of the restaurant, like, there's, there's, it's kind of impossible to have confidentiality. So how will be, how will we be reassuring and doing outreach to those kinds of workers?
We, as was mentioned, we are going to do everything we possibly can, and Shane can speak more to the specifics of, of our processes related to confidentiality, but we will do everything we possibly can. But it is true that if there's one employee, and in order for us to understand and request paperwork, we need to, there, without, there was no other way that we could reach out when they would not know, not because we would put their name out, but because just there is no other way. At the same time, we are really clear, we would let the complainant be really aware of the consequences, their resources around the fact that retaliation is illegal, that they have these rights, and therefore enable them to have, make an informed decision about their next step based on their own risk assessment, and we'll inform that process.
Thank you. And you may already have this set up or have thought this through, but I wonder if there is room to maybe have a list of trusted either organizations or employment lawyers who could support or be accessible to some of the complaints if they do get retaliated against and lose their jobs? Because I'm assuming this process takes a little bit, not, definitely not as long as the state, but, you know, if someone is fired tomorrow and they need their next check to be able to eat, you know, how can we reassure them that, that they won't go without in the meantime?
Maybe on the media, and Carolina or Shane could speak more to this, but reinstatement. So if, if the, if the claimant has filed a complaint with us, then reinstatement would be one of the first things that we could put in place as the OLC. So in that case, they would be, they would have the option to go back until this, the determination has been made. There's also additional options for them to file with the state for a larger set of challenges related to, whether it's retaliation, including wage theft, including all the different ways in which wage theft can come out. So filing with us does not preclude their ability to further exercise their, both civil action against their employer, as well as utilize the other government entities.
And in addition to that, the service that the advice line will be providing includes, includes the case management where they might be referred to private attorneys or other organizations that might be able to directly help them with violations that might be beyond the capability of the OLC.
Thank you so much. I'm really hopeful that with time, we will see a trust in, in this office, of recognition that it exists, that it's available, that it's really there for people to, number one, consult with, because it's really scary for people, especially the undocumented community who are very often, I would say, I would say, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but a good 90% of the time, victims of wage theft, because they don't get overtime, they don't get holiday pay, they don't get minimum wage. And so I think this happens way more than, than we recognize, and I'm really grateful for the work of my colleagues in bringing this forward, and also just think we should be very mindful of the complexity. I know that there are small businesses downtown who, who may feel like they can't thrive or succeed without stealing from their employees. It's really hard for me to say that, but it's the reality. And so I do think, you know, we need to have our chambers of commerce be a part of this, our downtown associations where they exist, because we want to educate people, and we also want to, want to see small businesses, but businesses thrive. And I actually think that honest small businesses are undercut when competitors withhold wages from other folks, and it doesn't, it's not a level playing field in that case. And so I approve, I approve, and you don't need my approval. I'm looking forward to supporting this amendment and really just want to thank everyone who played a role in bringing it forward, and I'm so excited for our most vulnerable workers to have access to this kind of support. Thank you.
Supervisor Mueller.
I'll move the item.
All right. Is there a second? All right, roll call, please. Thank you, Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
I would be remiss not to thank Julie Lind at the Labor Council for her passion. And I also want to, again, thank my colleague Supervisor Spear. It's like, it's like everyone's working really hard, and we're all drinking coffee, and Supervisor Spear comes in and she's drinking espresso. So, yes.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Goshay.
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we have two more items. We now come to item 16, which is a public hearing, followed by consideration of a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2024, 2025 county subsidy priorities presented by the San Mateo County Child Care Partnership Council for the distribution of future California Department of Education, California Department of Social Services funding for preschool, infant toddler, and school-age childcare and development services, and authorizing Supervisor Spear co-chair of the San Mateo County Child Care Partnership Council to execute and submit to the Local Planning Council County Priorities Report Form. On behalf of the county, this item is sponsored by Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a really sweet moment for me because I carried the legislation in 1991 to create these local childcare planning councils, and now to be on the one locally is really a great full circle. I'm going to let our able executive director, Jennifer Mayman, present to you, but I just want to make one point, and that is, this is a very sober report, because what it underscores is the fact that childcare in this county is unattainable for most families. The number of childcare spaces are up ironically, but there's still a deficit. The number of children in San Mateo County is declining. To just put this in perspective, we need 1,400 more slots for infants zero to two. We need 6,000 more slots for children two to four, and we need 7,500 more slots for school-age children. We actually have seen an increase of center-based sites by some 59 since 2022, I believe, and we've actually seen a decrease, and this is alarming, a decrease in the number of family childcare homes by some 24%. So we've got to figure out how we can make it more, I guess, pencil out more for families to have childcare homes. For subsidized childcare, the deficit is profound. For infants, there's an 8,000 that aren't able to receive it. For two- to four-year-olds, it's 1,200, and for school-age children, it's 13,000. This is a crisis in our county. I'm going to be presenting on it later in June, but I leave it to able Ms. Mayman to make the presentation.
Thank you, Supervisor Spear. Good morning, President, Board President Canepa, members of the board, County Executive Caligee, County Attorney Niblin, and county staff. My name is Jennifer Mayman, and I'm the coordinator for the San Mateo County Child Care Partnership Council, an advisory local planning council for both the Board of Supervisors and the County Superintendent of Schools. Today, I'm here to present on updated ZIP Code priorities for subsidized infant toddler childcare, preschool, and after-school care. The updated priorities are for your consideration and approval, and will then be shared with the California Department of Education and the California Department of Social Services to help the state determine where to invest additional dollars in childcare and preschool should funding be available. California Welfare and Institutions Code mandates that local planning councils identify local priorities for distribution of new state funding for childcare and preschool. The state sets the process for determining the subsidized childcare priorities, and there's no local discretion to revise the priorities. The local planning council and the county board of supervisors must approve the priorities. The Childcare Partnership Council approved the ZIP Code priorities at their March 17th meeting, and we're asking that you approve them today. The priorities reflect the gap between the number of children who are eligible for subsidized childcare and preschool and the supply in each ZIP Code. Priorities are determined using both a number and a percentage of unserved children with thresholds for the size of the county. So for San Mateo County, that is over 200,000 residents, but less than 1 million residents. All right, the priority-setting protocol. The state prescribes the following process for assigning a priority designation to each ZIP Code. Priority one indicates that there are 40% or more of eligible children that are underserved, and more than 150 children for infant toddler and preschool, or more than 200 children for school age who are underserved. Priority two indicates 25% or more of eligible children underserved, and more than 75 children infant toddler and preschool, or more than 100 children school age who are underserved. For priority three, we have three options. We have historically always used option two to assign all the remaining ZIP Codes with a priority of three, so that every ZIP Code is acknowledged with a ZIP Code priority designation. All right, so to determine the ZIP Code priorities, we use data from the 2023 American Community Survey to estimate the need for subsidized childcare and preschool. Specifically, the number of children in families with incomes below 500% of the federal poverty level was used. This benchmark approximates the income cutoff limits for state-funded preschool, which is CSPP, and general childcare, also known as CCTR. The number of children in each ZIP Code in the county who would be eligible for state-funded childcare or development services was then compared to the number of children enrolled in one or more state or federal subsidy programs, which include state preschool, general childcare, Head Start and Early Head Start, the Big Lift, Cow Works Stage One, Two, and Three, Transitional Kindergarten, after-school education and safety, known as ACES, and Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, also known as ELOP. Okay, so now on to the priorities. So these are the priorities for subsidized infant toddler care, and just to be clear, by infant toddler, we're referring to ages birth to age two. And as you can see, the majority of ZIP Codes in the county are fallen to priority one. There are only a few changes since ZIP Code priorities were last presented in 2023. Some of those notable changes are Half Moon Bay, ZIP Code 94019, went from priority three to priority one, Redwood City, 94062, and San Carlos both went from a priority one to a priority two, and San Mateo, 94402 and 94403, and Foster City went from priority two to priority one. So in total, we're meeting 12% of the need for subsidized infant toddler care, and this is an improvement from 2022, when we were meeting only 4% of the need. And as you can see, the picture is very different for preschool. There are very few priority one and two ZIP Codes. In the 2023 ZIP Code analysis, there were 16 ZIP Codes that were priority one or priority two, and now there are seven. In the 2022 Needs Assessment, there were subsidized spaces for 52% of eligible preschoolers. Now there is space for 80% of eligible preschoolers. So as a county, we should be really proud of that piece of bright news. And some of the reasons for the improvement include expanded eligibility criteria for the California State Preschool Program, and most of all, the expansion of Transitional And last, the priorities for subsidized school-age care, so serving children between ages five and 12, mostly in after-school care. Similar to infant toddler ZIP Codes, the majority of ZIP Codes in the county are priority one for school-age before and after-school care. This is an improvement from the 2023 ZIP Code analysis. In 2023, we had 23 ZIP Codes that were priority one and two for school-age care, and this year, there are 19 that are priority one and two. And county-wide, this reflects that we're serving 48% of eligible children between the ages of five and 12, which is a significant improvement over the 21% of school-age children we were serving in 2022. This expansion could be due to increased funding to school districts to offer Expanded Learning Opportunities programs. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Supervisor Spear.
I have no questions.
Are there any comments?
I have questions.
Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I, I'm, questions, okay. Thank you for your presentation. I think it's really interesting to dig into the data before us and also to hear about what the changes have been countywide in, from previous years. So my question around the determination via the ZIP Codes is how we are, what's the word here? How we're taking into account immigrant families who maybe weren't in this data for whatever reason?
Yeah, I mean, I think this analysis, the, the parameters for this analysis are really prescribed by the state, and for- And for lack of better data, we use the American Community Survey. We have recently completed a much more comprehensive supply and demand analysis, and I'm happy to come before the Board and present that soon. I think going forward, we would really, our goal is to focus on childcare for the most vulnerable families, and certainly immigrant families fall into that group.
Thank you so much. I think about one community, and Supervisor Mueller, I hope you don't mind me using Pescadero as an example. We've heard them come before this board, and I don't, although I don't think it's necessarily been about childcare, like, there's a big need for childcare in that community, and I think they have one preschool program through Puente, one classroom.
Yep.
And they have talked about how they have far more need than they're able to meet. And yet I noticed that their ZIP Code is not in priority one or two. So I'm just thinking about how we can kind of reconcile that.
So I actually can. I mean, I think the, I think it has to do with the population surrounding it. This is the same issue I ran into on Samtrans when we were looking at bus stops. Sometimes the metrics we use look at surrounding population to assess need as opposed to the absence of and cost. And so if you look at cost and absence of, we have a problem on our entire coast side. Actually, the Moss Beach, San Gregorio area, I think it was in the insights put on by Silicon, the Silicon Valley Group, I forget their name. They indicated it was one of the most, it was one of the highest costs for childcare in the Bay Area, actually ranked that way. And we're in the mid-coast, we're about to lose a childcare provider, and we've been trying to work on this issue. Grateful for the County Executive's Office working with me as we try to go ahead and assess that situation. I'm not surprised Half Moon Bay is on there because the population around that would sort of bear it out and move them up in the metric. And then in Pescadero, we have the same issue. We just, it is a tremendous issue for the mid, for the mid-coast. And so I will follow up with you to talk about, to take a look at those metrics. But I really appreciate this, this report. It goes back to my colleagues, what I brought up when we were doing our retreat. I really think we need to look at, potentially looking at the impact fees associated with development that the city of San Mateo and the city of San Carlos and others have adopted to go ahead and create the space for childcare centers and developments as they're being built, because it's very hard to find them. But I very much appreciate the part, appreciate your work in this area, Supervisor Spear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This doesn't relate specifically to childcare, but it relates to mental health service for zero to five, which is critical as well. And just yesterday, at the first five commission, we authorized $600,000 for a loss and $150,000 for Puente for mental health services for this age group.
Thank you.
Supervisor Goshen?
Oh, yeah, thank you, sorry. So my, my team helped me with the question here, but I realize I actually know the answer to this one, but I'll just ask it, and then I'll kind of share my perspective, and maybe you can add to it. So there's, there are some ZIP Codes that, you know, are high priority for infant and toddler age, but not for preschool. And my response to that is, when I was on the school board in San Mateo Foster City School District, we, we pushed really hard to open more preschool classrooms. And then beyond that, we pushed really hard to make sure that they were mixed classrooms of subsidized students, subsidized preschool students, and fee-based preschool students. Because what we discovered through our many years of conversations around, you know, increasing preschool was that the policy in the past had been to pay the fee-based teachers much more than the subsidized teachers, and so that was creating inequity for decades in that, in our, in our school district. And so I just lift that up because I think it's really important that we, as supervisors, have conversations with our school board members so that they can ensure that that's not the case in their districts, and that they know that there's a local example of how to have mixed classrooms. Because it's beneficial for so many reasons, but it's also just the right thing to do. So that was my response to that question. I don't know if you have a different one or want to add anything?
No, I, you know, fortunately, fortunately, there are a number of programs all over the county who are able to implement, who are really able to braid funding and blend funding so that they have a truly inclusive program. And the first one that comes to mind is All Five in East Mellow Park. They blend state preschool funding, general childcare funding, and fee-based to create just one program. So you don't walk into a classroom, and this is my CSPP classroom, this is my fee-based classroom. All of the kids are together, and teachers are paid with parity across the board.
Thank you so much. Yeah, those are my questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Goshen?
Thank you. I know I missed the report because I stepped out, but one of the most important titles that I have is that of a grandmother of a four-year-old. And I have witnessed the importance of childcare and the development of the brain, but also the limited spots. Sometimes parents just have to take what they can get because childcare also, or lack thereof, is a barrier to working and participating in society in general. Oftentimes, when we look at how we're going to fund things, there are single parents out there who are paying a lot of money just to keep a roof over their head that cannot, are barely making it when it comes to childcare. Some childcare spots are like private school tuitions for, for these parents. So this is something that I want to thank, thank you for bringing this forward. It is important to me. I fully support anything that we can do to help our, our youngest, because they're our future leaders as well. So let's continue to find spots, do what we can to be supportive. But let's not forget the single parents who are maybe making just a little bit more. But, you know, without any support, they may have to sit at home and not be able to work as well.
Great, thank you. You have several questions. The first question is, can you talk a little bit about the, the community engagement process? What that consists of? You know, I'm just curious to, you know, the ZIP Codes. And then maybe you can just sort of reflect on your, your past work and sort of, when this plan was put together, what areas have you identified? I know in, in my district, 94014, 94015, but in particular, 94014, which is, for many of you who don't know, close to the Cow Palace, the Bay Shore area, and we're doing a lot in terms of, you know, childcare, especially within Midway. Can you just speak to that and why, why this plan is so important, or previous plans are important?
Sure. You know, the ZIP Code priorities presents one picture, a really important picture. It presents the needs of our most neediest residents for childcare. As I mentioned before, we, every five years, local planning councils complete a needs assessment, which looks at the entire county, so all parents. And we, the last one was completed in 2022. We actually just recently updated it, and I'm happy to share that with, with the Board. So for the ZIP Code priority report, there wasn't much community engagement. It really was just looking at data. However, for another initiative that we are undertaking right now called the Childcare Blueprint, the amount of community engagement is very deep. We have been working with school districts, providers, but also parents, business, the business community, chambers of commerce, to really understand, you know, we have the data, but we really need to understand from the community's perspective what they're seeing and what their needs are, and what the barriers are from their perspective. And so that's going to really inform our work going forward. I think the goal of that really is to see, you know, this tells us where the needs are by ZIP Code, which is sort of one way of looking at data. That blueprint report will really show us all of the funding sources coming into the county, and then really where the needs are on a school district level, on a city level. And as I mentioned, we'll get all the qualitative data from, from the community engagement.
Great. And you know, my follow-up question, and you had talked about it, is about the, and maybe you can help us, I'm trying to sort of reconcile a couple of things. On the five-year estimates, can you talk about demographics, things change? Can you speak a little bit to, five years is a lot.
Sure.
So what's sort of the built-in flexibility within the five-year plan? Can you speak to that a little?
You mean the, the childcare needs assessment every five years?
Correct.
You know, it does show, five years is a long time, which is why I'm, I'm grateful that we have the resources to be able to update our community needs assessment within those five years. But yeah, a great deal does change. You know, as we've seen, we've had a decrease in the total number of children since our last needs assessment, and we are, you know, trying to really be responsive with our childcare system to that. It's a large, complicated system, and so, like other large, complicated systems, hard to move on a dime. But we're really trying to establish processes that make it so that we can shift capacity to where we need it. One process that is in place that was actually created by my former, former predecessor in this role, Normala Dilman, was called the Voluntary Temporary Transfer of Funds Process. So under-earning contractors can relinquish funds just for that one year and provide them to contractors who may be over-earning their contract. And that's a way to sort of shift resources relatively quickly. That's an annual process. And we're really looking into how, how we can sort of respond as, you know, as demographics change, as the needs of communities change. I think also, you know, the, the rollout of TK has really rocked the childcare system in a way. It's been tremendously beneficial for families, and it has created a great degree of disruption within our existing childcare system. So really helping providers move through that is also a goal of ours.
Yeah, and the reason I say I think the demographic piece is critically, critically important, let me just sort of give you a, a local example. You know, we had with, you know, influx, I think within three or four years, we had in, especially in Daly City, there's been a huge uptick, huge amount of people who are Arabic, right, who come from Arab, Arab countries. Now, the five years, what I hope, and I think you've addressed a little, that in terms of that demographic, I hope that demographic is, it appears to be recognized. And so it went from a primarily Latino community, I'm talking about the Westlake Apartments, and then because of the influx of Arabs, Arab-Americans now, that we've seen that, that increase. So I appreciate your presentation. Are there any additional comments? Yes.
I just also wanted to take a moment to, no pun intended, maybe, maybe a little bit, lift up the Big Lift and the Big Lift's role in partnering and funding school districts to increase preschool, summer learning programs, which are also a form of childcare for districts and students where they're needed the most. And for full transparency's sake, I don't know that the Big Lift always ensured that in the past that those seats were going to those who needed childcare and, and that extra support the most, and now we definitely are. So I just wanted to, to share that as well, because we need as many resources and as much collaboration as possible to increase childcare. And I do think the, the Big Lift is a part of that. And I don't know if you want to add anything on that?
No, I agree. I think that that's reflected also in the decreased need for subsidized preschool. That's one of the ingredients, yeah.
Thank you so much.
One other question, and that is, how do we work with businesses as well? I know that there's, there are opportunities for those stipends. Are we, how do we encourage more businesses to, and that just as a benefit, when they look at their benefit package, to provide some type of substance or subsidy for their childcare as well?
Can I jump in before you do, Jennifer? Many of the childcare centers that companies have opened have now closed. The various states that we've looked at, there's a program called TriShare that Michigan is doing and New York State is doing, in which the employer is making a contribution, the family is making a contribution, and the government is making a contribution. So when I bring my proposal to the Board, that will be one of the things that we will consider in terms of whether or not we want to do something like that here in San Mateo County. But the fact that business has, has basically walked away from that is disturbing. The one good news we might want to point out is that there are vacancies right now in our county childcare center. So there are slots open that we should make sure we announce that to everybody by virtue of this board meeting. But there, there are some slots available in some of these settings, and we've got to create a means by which families can access that online very easily and quickly, and hopefully we'll be able to be doing that as well. Jennifer, you might have something further to say.
No, I, I think, my, I echo Supervisor Spear's response. I think we have been reaching out to the chambers of commerce in cities and the county chamber of commerce. They're very receptive. But I think when it comes to individual businesses seeing childcare as a vital support for their employees, I think we, we have some advocacy to do. You know, in our county, SFO stands out as sort of the shining example of, they offer childcare subsidies to their employees. They were instrumental in the creation of PAL Care, which is one of the only centers that offers childcare for non-traditional hours. And, you know, we need more business engagement like, like that model.
And I would also encourage the organizations, like the business associations, like talking to them, the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, Bay Area Council, if we could engage them, because they're the ones that are actually working with a lot of the businesses as well in the region.
Yeah.
All right. This item requires a public hearing with unanimous consent. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Unanimous consent?
Yes.
I'll ask the clerk to recognize anyone who wants to be heard in this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. A public hearing is now open. I don't have any speakers slipped from this room, so Madam, quick, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand for Item 16's Public Hearing on the Childcare Partnership Council item. One hand raised for Dan Stajnik. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you to former Congresswoman Spear for bringing this forward. I'd like to echo what Supervisor Gautier said, that childcare really is about getting to work, and it's really about getting your other kids to school here also. And I will just say that Noella Corzo, I believe, is right. I think there's a data anomaly that's throwing Pescadero and part of the coast off, off of the data here. If you look at like the data commons list for San Mateo County by income, it's the lowest, East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, Daly City, Colma, Moss Beach, SSF, San Bruno, Redwood City, Brisbane, San Mateo, Half Moon Bay, and Pacifica. One of the reasons this is a little skewed is because the three biggest cities have been split up, San Mateo, Redwood City, and Daly City, but not South San Francisco, which probably should have also been split up in this data anomaly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. No further hands, Mr. President.
Okay, do I have unanimous consent to close the public hearing? Thank you. Supervisor Spear, do you want to move approval of this resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Goshen?
Yes.
And President Canepa? Yes.
Link and motion passes.
All right.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're now at Item 17, which is Resolution Directing the County Purchasing Agent or Designating to Submit Quarterly Reports to the Board of Supervisors Setting Forth Purchase of Goods in Proceeding Quarters That Exceed $100,000, as Well As All Non-Competitive County Purchases of Goods and Services in the Proceeding Quarter That Exceed $10,000. This item comes from, from Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the hour is late, so I'm going to try and make this brief, but I want to say to Controla Rigosa, he's the one who first suggested this. I asked him, what does he think we should be doing? And he says, well, we have service contracts that are over $200,000, come before the Board, but we don't have any requirement for goods. And so we've researched that. Let me just say that Jas Sandhar, who is our procurement agent, does a great job. And earlier, I referenced those 10 massage chairs that were requested by the Sheriff's Office. She declined to process that, so she does a good job on her own. But I think it's important for us to be providing the oversight that we're, we're charged to do. So this will basically provide that on a quarterly basis- So this will basically provide that on a quarterly basis, we may want to reduce it to, um, every two months, but right now we're going to keep it, um, simple. Quarterly, we'll receive a report identifying purchases of goods that exceed $100,000. And then as it relates to goods that are not competitively bid, uh, this would provide that we would be receiving a report on anything over $10,000. Interestingly enough, um, Los Angeles County uses a $5,000 figure, but we're going to start with $10,000. Sunshine is the best disinfectant, and so I think by having access to this information, it'll help us do our job and protect the taxpayers' dollars.
Are there any comments? You know, I have a couple of comments from staff. You know, my understanding is that, um, this information is already readily available through OpenGov. So if someone wants to look at this information, um, they can go through, um, OpenGov, which is an existing, uh, review for procurements. Is, can you speak to that?
Uh, I, I may end up deferring to, um, our, our friends from procurement, but I, I think that the information likely is available through, um, various, uh, sites. I think the issue is kind of accessibility and the aggregation of it and the, you know, the, the ease with which it can be, um, accessed. Uh, so that's my generalized understanding, but I'm going to defer.
But, but the information, i- it's, is it public? Can, sorry, can you speak to that?
Yes, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, County Executives. Currently, our waivers are not, for the waivers of competitive solicitation are not in OpenGov. They will be as of July first. That's why we proposed the October 2025 report date. We have goods that are per, purchased through OFIS. So we have POs where we could showcase the reporting for goods that are purchased over 100,000 now. But waivers of competitive solicitation are all over the place, some with departments, some with procurement, a few in OpenGov as of right now.
Great, can you, um, and maybe this is for, for Mr. Manquia or yourself. Is there, have we placed a cost in implementing this? And, and how many staff, additional staff we may need? I'm just curious from a staff perspective.
So good morning, Supervisors, Mr. Kalagi, Mr. Nivlin and Ms. Rodriguez. There is no added cost. We are doing this with the existing staffing and the hope would be to possibly, um, utilize the OpenGov system to be able to expand what it currently does and be able to garner all this information quickly out of there. That's the idea that we have at this moment in time.
So there's already, and this is where I'm getting, so we're going to be using OpenGov? Is that what you just said?
We're going to be collecting more of the information that is not being collected today through the OpenGov system so that then we can give it to you in a different way and put it in a categorized fashion so that you all have the information and it's readily available and readable. If we were to do it out of OFIS or we were to do it out of a different system, it's very, um, it's very difficult to read because it is an ERP system or it's, it's about keeping records in regards to the accounting side of the house, not distinctly about keeping records on waivers and other pieces. So it would be very hard to get you that information out of that existing system.
Great, and then, um, I'm just curious to the, the thresholds. There's $100,000. My understanding is that through, uh, the CEO, he has authority to, I believe, it's, is it 200,000, Mike? Is there any conflict, um, in that that you see?
We don't believe there's any conflict and the 10,000 runs up against the federal side of the House right now. So we are aligning with all the federal government codes that the federal government has. We just during COVID implemented that dollar value, um, that was a little higher to be able to make things move. So now we are bringing it back to that 100,000 limit.
Yeah, um, colleagues, let me just say, you know, I'm not going to be supporting, um, this item today just because I think the information is, is readily available. I do think that this is, um, cumbersome. And, um, I am concerned that when it comes to critical purchases, that there may be a potential delay. So I don't know if there are any additional comments?
Well, I'll, yes, I will comment that this is going to be given to us after the fact. So this is going to be three months after it's been purchased. So there's no delay in the purchase of anything.
Supervisor Corzo?
Um, I, I think I, I had shared some, uh, concerns around like, will this create, uh, a burden on staff? Will it create delays? But, um, as, uh, my team and I looked into it more, we realized it wouldn't. And I do think it, um, is good for transparency's sake, especially if we're able to just like get it in OpenGov and, and make it a little more seamless, which I'm, can you, uh, repeat that part again? Because I maybe misunderstood a bit. Will this be going in OpenGov?
Most of the information will be in OpenGov. There'll be a portion of it that will have to be extrapolated from the OFIS system itself, but then we'll load it into OpenGov at that point.
Okay, and our OpenGov system already allows for this? Or will we have to increase our contract with OpenGov?
No, we will not have to increase our contract. We're building waiver templates that will be active for departments to use as of July first.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, Supervisor Spear, for bringing it forward. Um, I think Supervisor Mueller has questions, but I, I do feel comfortable, um, supporting this item today.
Yeah, I'm going to support the item. Thank you for bringing it forward.
You know, I have one more question. What do we do with this procurement information? Why is it so important through staff?
I mean, I could speak to it publicly. I think it's important to be transparent on how we spend taxpayer dollars. So that is probably the main reason that the supervisor brought this up as a resolution.
And then, so when we were doing it before, we weren't doing that?
It wasn't reported to the board. I believe this resolution is bringing the report to the board. We've never done that. In my time, we have not done that at this county.
We have not done, and, and so why didn't we do it before? I'm just curious.
I can't.
Maybe Mr. Manquia, you can answer that question?
Well, I note there was no legal requirement to do it. And, and so that was it. And, and I think part of, uh, I know talking to the county executive over time, we'd been, uh, interested in, in figuring out ways to, to facilitate the board's oversight functions.
And President Kanapa, there was actually, um, no request before to do it, so that's, that's why.
No, I think clearly, and I, and I'll say this again, one of the things I'm greatly concerned about, and I'm hoping, um, you know, through this quarterly report, that it isn't politicized. We're not, um, you know, using this as a tool, um, in terms of, um, you know, putting politics in, in terms of, um, us politicizing these reports and finding little things. I know, I see you nodding your head this way, Mr. Manquia, which is...
I don't believe this is what this does at all. It's just basically being a little bit more transparent to the board and allowing a report to come in, again, after the fact, that literally shows what it is that we've had to waive because the procurement process itself is a little, um, is a little intricate in regards to what you can and cannot do. And we just want to make sure that we're showing you that the things that we are doing are above board on a constant basis. That's really what this is.
And we, we should expect through this action, no delay in procurement, is that correct?
Correct, no delay in procurement.
Okay. So why don't we take public comment?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand to comments. I do see one hand for Dan Stajink. And please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Last comment today, I promise. In the actual text of the resolution, procured through a competitive solicitation, best practices might indicate that be changed to procured through a competitive three-bid solicitation. Other counties across the US and California have a, a stipulation that non-emergency waivers should not be made for staff-owned companies in which, uh, um, county staff members have a direct or indirect ownership interest. That's kind of a basic transparency one. Also there, historically, um, not with any, anybody in particular, we've had a huge problem with, with political campaign donors getting big contracts, big multi-year real estate contracts, et cetera. And non-emergency waivers should also not be made for those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. No further comments, Mr. President.
All right, um, is there motion?
Second.
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Sure, Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gaultier?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Kanapa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
With that, we'll adjourn, uh, through, um, uh, Mr. Nivlin, will we be reporting out?
I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you. While the board is currently in recess and closed session, and then we'll, uh, resume shortly. The time is now 1:20 PM. Will it resume shortly? Okay, Mr. President, we're back in open session. The time is, uh, 2:25 PM. And for the record, Supervisor Spear, Gaultier and President Kanapa is present, and Supervisor Corzo and Mueller are absent.
Thank you so much. With that, County Attorney Nivlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll report that the board unanimously approved initiation of litigation in one case. And the, uh, specifics, particulars of that case, uh, once that case is formally commenced, will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. And that's it.
With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. All the time is 2:26 PM. Meeting is adjourned.